Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the regular meeting of the Stoneington Planning and Zoning Commission. It's August 20th, 7:00 PM. Let the record reflect that the meeting is called to order. Good evening to everyone from the public who was attended this evening. Good evening to all commissioners. First item of business is to appoint alternates. And I've been informed that one of our regular members, Alyssa Morrison, will be late this evening. And until she arrives, Mary Ellen Mataleska is appointed as an alternate to serve in her stead. We will make a determination from that point forward, as this is Alyssa's first meeting, as to whether she can be seated for several of the public hearing items that will be followed. It's based on whether or not she's reviewed the records from those meetings. Next item on the agenda is minutes. What's the commission's pleasure on minutes number 1764 from July 6, 2024 meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes for meeting number 1764 from July 16, 2024, as submitted.
Motion from Ryan to approve. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Gary. Thank you both. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
We now move to minutes number 1765, July 24, 2024 meeting. What's the commission's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for meeting number 1765 from July 24, 2024, as submitted.
Thank you, Ryan. Motion by Ryan to approve. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Gary. Thank you, Gary. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
I'll abstain if there's not attendance at that meeting.
One abstention.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions except for Ryan?
Mary Ellen.
Mary Ellen also. All in favor? Chair votes aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item four, public comment. This is the opportunity for anyone who is not here on any specific application to make a comment, simply take the mic. I guess there is no mic in this room. So speak as loudly as you can so everybody can hear you. And you're welcome to come forward. Please identify yourself and state your address. Once again, anyone wish to make a comment? Hearing none, we move to item five, correspondence. Clifton?
I don't have a report necessarily that's on this agenda, but as of today, both the chair and myself discussed with our consultant, FHI Studio, as part of the zoning regulation rewrite that we're going to be postponing next week's standing virtual meeting, which is on August 28th. That will be rescheduled to Wednesday, September 4th at 7:00 PM, so it's going to be postponed one week. That will be posted on the town website later this week. I'm just making a point of reference for the video and any members of the public interested in that.
Excellent. Is that it? We do have one item of correspondence from the town engineer that's in addition to your packet.
I'll discuss that at the application.
That's fine. And we'll make comment on that later in the meeting. Reports from staff. Any report, Clifton? Hearing none. No report from the commission at this time. Zoning enforcement and violations, you have the zoning officers, enforcement officers' report in your packet. Administrative review? Item one. Mystic Seaport Museum. Is there anyone here to represent the seaport? This is administrative review for the installation of 100 by 40 temporary structure to enclose a ship for preservation work.
Good evening. My name is Barbara McCrull, and I'm the director of facilities at the Mystic Seaport. Joining me today are some gentlemen and actually some people from the shipyard that are responsible for the project that this structure is being constructed for. And so we're here today to request your approval to construct a, it's a temporary structure that will cover the Susan Constant ship that we are doing preservation work on. The ship has actually already been pulled out of the water and work is being started. The cover is required so that we're allowed to be able to continue to complete the work as the weather comes in and basically year-round restoration work. The thing to note is that this structure was actually approved and installed in 2016. And so what we're doing is actually, we take the structure down, we store it, and then when we get another project in, we reinstall the exact same structure that was approved back in 2016. And actually, even more coincidental is the plan in your package that shows the structure is from the GIS map from 2016, and it actually shows the exact structure sitting in that place. And so what we're doing is basically repeating the past and putting it down in exactly the same location. If you wanted more information on exactly what's going on in the ship and the preservation process, the rest of my team that's here with me can answer those questions.
Any questions from the commission? Just a couple. I'm sure this is designed for shoreline wind loads and tied down for uplift. Is that something that's reviewed by the building official?
Yes, yes. We have full plans and structural plans on it that is submitted to the building official. And we actually construct it and put it together in-house, and we'll be getting the permit from the building official, and he'll be doing the inspections while it's being constructed.
What is the detail of the tie-down? Maybe the staff could just answer that.
The building is mounted to the cement jolly block foundation.
Okay.
Each jolly block is 2,000-pound block. And then there are also vents for flooding. And there are some wind load engineering calculations in the packet that I have given to Barbara.
Okay. How is it attached to the blocks?
It's bolted into the cement.
Okay. What's bolted into the cement? The truss?
Every single truss that goes over from foundation from side to side.
So every one of them is tied down?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
Actually, I did have one question. Sorry. And I may have missed it in the application. Is there going to be power or lighting?
There'll be temporary power or lighting in the ship, yes.
Okay. Fire suppression? No fire suppression, obviously.
Handheld fire extinguishers onboard the ship and inside the building, as we did.
Is there a fire hydrant nearby?
Yes.
Okay. How far away?
50 feet maybe? 50 or 60 feet away?
Thank you. Any further questions?
In the eight years passed, has anything changed as far as where it's going to go sea level-wise or anything?
No, it's quite far above sea level. That location on our property is probably the highest point above sea level. But that's what the vents are for. They're basically a two-by-three void in the foundation to let water flow through if there were any flooding and flowing issues.
Thank you. What you guys really need is a floating drive. It's like they have. It would be ideal for this. I'm just working on a job on it, and I've never seen one work before. It's incredible, absolutely incredible. Okay. What's the commission's pleasure on item one? There are no further questions.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the application submitted for item one for the 24-128ZOM Mystic Seaport Museum.
Motion to approve by Ryan. Thank you, Ryan. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, was that Lynn?
Yes.
Thank you, Lynn. Any questions on the motion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any abstentions? Any opposition? The motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Item two, application number PZ2404SUP plus CAM Courier Group LLC, care of Robert Courier.
Oh, I'm sorry, do I need? This is for the presentation. Oh, oh, brief, again, okay. I'm setting up a, I'd like to set up a food truck park at 779 Stoneington Road, three food trucks and parking up to like 15 spaces.
So why, yeah, this one is before us again. This was previously approved by the commission. As a specialty agreement in CAM application, one of the stipulations was related to improvements necessary through Connecticut DOT's review of the project because it's off of Route 1 and utilizes an access easement on that is DOT property. So part of this was that project had to go back before DOT. Any changes that would come back could be reviewed again by the commission. These are just a couple of the changes that are listed. The only other thing that was provided beyond DOT comment was a couple of comments from the town engineer. And in satisfying that, it would meet the original stipulations that were set with the project. So kept it very short and sweet in the report. This is just a minor update per DOT's requirements.
Right. The comments were fairly extensive from DOT, but actually, part of it is on DOT property, right?
Correct.
Part of the parking and extensive work to actually create the parking. So DOT really scrutinizes this kind of permits, I'm sure you're well aware of.
I think that the majority of the changes were related to the stop bar locations as well as the floodlight locations.
Okay.
That were both within and outside of the easement area. So that's what's changed on the site plan as required by DOT. And then they also required an overlay of their easement area on that final site plan that would be signed by the commission. So really simple changes.
Are you leasing this property from DOT? Are you required to lease the area you're going to use?
The front portion, yes. There's a lease agreement, yep.
Have you started that process yet?
Well, it's been approved. I pay, yeah, so it's, we're just waiting to hear back from them.
That's fine.
Yep.
Thank you. Commission have any further questions of the Courier Group?
I just have one. The storage trailer that's on there, is that new from the previous plan?
Yeah, because, correct. I figured I might need something to put chair, you know, put things away, and it's going to be a mobile, it's a trailer, so it'll be pulled out also, yeah, if it needs to be.
Any further questions of Mr. Courier? Hearing none. What's the board's pleasure on the application of Courier Group LLC?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the application of the Courier Group LLC, PZ2404SUP and CAM, as submitted.
Okay, no stipulations?
No stipulations. No.
Okay. Motion to approve by Ryan. Thank you, Ryan. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Gary. Thank you, Gary. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Moving on to item seven, all business. We have Rivers End, application PZ2416CAM, application numbers on LLC, Joe Wren, PE agent. Do we have to reopen something from a previous?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Joe Wren, professional engineer, owner and principal of Indigo in Old Saybrook. We represent Mr. Lozot on this application. Last week, we were in front of ZDA, and we did receive approval from Zoning Board of Appeals for this particular project. The reason for that variance was everything is being made conforming overall in this project. We are just within 100 feet of the coastal jurisdiction line in the non-infringement area. That comes up to this green dotted line, and there's no way to avoid that infringement area. So that is the main reason why we were granted the variance. In a nutshell, the project's located at 11 Edgemont Street. All of this is the same map that you have in front of you, should be. It was updated last week per staff's, ZDA's comments and staff requesting an updated plan for this board, and that was submitted to them. On this map and highlighted here, just so it's easier to see, in orange, we have the zone lines. So south here, we have RC 120, and then we have the MC 80 in the center. And the majority of the property and where the structure lies is in the RH 10 zone. So all of those zoning regulations apply, hence the zoning table, lower right-hand corner. The existing structure is a small commercial building. Basically, what's being done, it's not being expanded in any way. A deck is being built and the building placed and attached to the top of it so that it conforms to FEMA flood regulations plus the town's flood ordinances. Initially, the deck was larger. It was 70.5 feet long. And based on the DEP's comments and the comments from Zoning Board of Appeals last week, we offered to shrink that by 14 feet, which is one column span.
I could interrupt you for just one moment. Our newly appointed commissioner, Melissa Morrison, has joined us. You were introduced previously in abstentions, so.
Sorry I'm late.
Take your seat. That's okay. We understand it was work-related.
Thank you for that, for sure.
Thank you. No worries. So just to reiterate, it's an important point. It was initially 70.5 feet long, and there were five spans of 14 feet or so, plus the outbound attachments. And based on the Connecticut DEP review for our coastal area management application and ZDA's review of this, we offered to shrink that by one column span of 14 feet from 70.5 feet to 56.5 feet. So now we have, in this direction, north-south, we have 56.5, and this plan indicates that. Additionally, one other thing that was offered, it wasn't requested by DEP or anyone else, but what we did in this area, we identified the edge of the lawn, and on that edge of the lawn, we added a five-foot planted buffer with native plantings in there, just for any, to filter any runoff or anything going toward the tidal wetland and toward the river. So we added that in there along with shrinking the deck, and with those two items, the ZDA approved the variance as we discussed before. So as far as what's being proposed, already mentioned before that we're taking the existing building, temporarily moving it, construct or raising it, constructing this deck with all these pilings that are showing on here, meeting all wind loads, of course, and flood regulations, and then setting the existing building on top of the deck and attaching it for high wind loads, as mentioned in previous application. The other thing that we are doing is shifting it slightly to the west. If you look at the zoning table and all the dimensions provided on the right-hand side of the drawing, you can see that the existing structure is not conforming to side yard setback. We have the aggregate side yard setback, and on the eastern side, we have the five-foot. The existing building is two, two feet and change to the property line. We are bringing that back so no part of the structure is less than five feet to the sideline. So we're making that conforming, eliminating all those zoning non-conformities on that side. We meet every other dimensional requirement, again, except for the 100-foot area to the coastal jurisdiction line. And the reason why we can't meet that is that line comes up here and it takes out all of, just about all of the buildable area on the property, much less than where the existing house is itself. Last thing I would like to point out is, highlighted in yellow here, is all existing infrastructure. So we have the existing building that sits there. We have an existing deck to the rear. We have an existing patio, and then we also have an existing sidewalk that comes across there. So all of those elements would be removed and replaced with this FEMA-compliant structure. The area is very low-lying and floods frequently from the river. So with the elevated deck, they'll be able to use the structure, utilize the outdoor area without being in the frequent inundation of the site. So that's the whole purpose of the project. The flood zone is VE 14. This is the pink line here. Entire structure is within the VE 14, and the structure itself as designed meets or exceeds FEMA regulations and the town ordinances. So with that, if you have any questions, even more than that, we are.
Thank you.
Try and answer your.
Any questions of the applicant's engineer?
If I can, curiosity, is there going to be any additional lighting with the increased deck side lighting changes?
There, to my knowledge, are no lighting changes at all.
Okay. Any other questions, Ryan? No. Anyone else have any questions? I have a couple. What happens to the, how is the roof water collected? Is it collected or is it just runoff?
So very good question. On this site, we knew that it was going to be sensitive for runoff and infiltration and so forth. We do have an existing paved driveway that we're eliminating. We have to pave the apron for snowplows and overworks and so forth. But we've turned all the parking area into crushed stone, so we have a permeable surface. So just right there, we've eliminated this imperviousness. We've added crushed stone, which is not processed stone, it's a crushed stone that stays permeable in all of that area, and under the deck is permeable too. Presently, the house sits on the ground, so it eliminates that footprint area from water being able to infiltrate. With this lifted up and with crushed stone under the deck, any surface water coming from any direction or falling from the sky through the deck or sideways can infiltrate now under the ground, under the house. So effectively, by eliminating that, changing out the crushed stone and lifting it above, we've reduced, dramatically reduced the impervious cover. We don't have any impervious cover on the ground here any longer. We've eliminated all that. Before, we had the driveway in the house. Everything's up in here, and it's a permeable surface.
It's going to be offset a little bit by, you know, additional elevation head, which is going to create more pressure. So what used to be something that dissipated will probably be something that can scour now. Is it possible to grade along the property lines to direct it towards the water body?
So with this, since it's low-lying, we did, there is some proposed fill here, a foot, foot and a half or so, and it is graded along the property lines, as you mentioned, to direct it towards the side.
Okay. I think that's it for me. Anyone else have any questions? Hearing none. What's the commission's pleasure on the application of Rivers End LLC?
Just to check, Clifton, was there any concerns? It looked like the town engineer had comments, but as long as those are addressed as part of the stipulations, everything else looked in order.
Yep, that's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve this application as submitted with the following, recommended with the following stipulations. Number one, the applicant shall address the outstanding comments of the satisfaction of the town engineer. Number two, the applicant shall provide revised plans to the town consistent with approval of COV 24-10. Number three, final plans shall be reviewed to the satisfaction of the town engineer and town planner. And number four, prior to the issuance of a zoning permit, the final plan shall be signed by the commission and recorded in the town's land evidence records.
Motion to approve by Ryan with conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Lynn. Thank you, Lynn. And for this application, Commissioner Morrison will vote this evening. Is there any other questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wren. Second item under all business, PZ24117BR Settoroli LLC, George Settoroli. Someone here to represent the applicant?
Yes. George Sacaroli.
An applicant and representative.
Yes.
There you go. Thank you, sir.
So I think I just found out today that there was going to, I was going for a reduction in the bond.
Correct.
And I was denied for, I was going to go for a partial. Did it get denied or were approved or?
Well, we have a, some correspondence that was handed to us this evening. I think Clifton is familiar with the correspondence. It's from the town engineer.
Yeah.
And the town engineer has some issues with it and is recommending that the board take no action until those issues are dealt with.
So the issue is the retention pond, correct?
That's not stated. That's not stated. It simply says that there's no change since, I believe, the last inspection.
We had a meeting on-site about three months ago. We were going to do the retention pond because it wasn't done according to the plans. But since then, and the reason I haven't done it, the retention pond is pretty close to the building. And when I go to build the building, I think if I do the retention pond, I'm going to end up having to tear it out so we can access in there to do some work. It is kind of close. It's like two or three, about three and four feet away from the foundation. So I thought, my plan was do the retention pond after the construction of the building. So we've done quite a bit of work on-site. I mean, if you look.
Detention ponds are generally built for, to accommodate future conditions. So the staging of construction is normally to do the detention pond before you create an increase in runoff. And the detention pond holds back the difference. That's normally, you know, simply stated, the way it works.
The pond is here, I think, to take the roof runoff, like you were talking about.
Right.
So.
So I would advise you to meet with the town engineer and the town planner. Clifton, any additional remark?
Yeah, just to summarize, we met with the applicant and the applicant's engineer on-site back in July to discuss the bond application. It was originally a request for a full release. In our discussion, we deemed that a partial release would be more applicable at the time. So the applicant and his engineer provided, and what's included in your plan set, is a revised ENS plan, site plan. At the time of writing the report and distributing it, the town engineer hadn't had time to go out and verify the on-site conditions. So that's why you received the letter in front of you that was submitted to me today requesting additional time. So the next regularly scheduled meeting would be, I believe, September 17th, which is within the time period allowed to decide on this application. So the recommendation is just to table that decision.
Okay. Hopefully, we can get it straightened out before the next meeting and, or the next, the meeting just started, and move forward. So I advise you, as soon as you can, to get ahold of our town planner, the town engineer, see what needs to be done, completed to their satisfaction, and return here hopefully with a positive recommendation.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, George. Okay.
Just need to, okay, recommended.
Motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to table the application for Sacaroli PZ2417BR.
Motion made to table this application by Ryan. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Okay. Moving on to public hearing. Lynn, can you read the notice of the first public hearing? Or is this a continuation?
Yeah, I was going to say.
Okay. So motion to remove it from the table.
Reopen the public.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to reopen the public hearing for PZ2411SUP and CAM, J&amp;H Mystic Hospitality.
CAM.
Oh, is it CAM?
One before that.
Oh, one before that, my apologies. 24, sorry. Got it here. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to reopen the public hearing for PZ2410SUP and CAM, Generation Four LLC, Esmeral.
Motion made to reopen the public hearing by Ryan. Thank you, Ryan. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Lynn. Thank you, Lynn. Any discussion on the motion? And I do need to ask one question. Since this is your first meeting, obviously, you weren't present for the last meeting.
I will not vote on this one.
Okay, fine.
And whoever was seated can vote on this.
Very good. In future cases where we have this sort of situation where you might have had to have missed a meeting, you do have the opportunity to look at the video.
Sure.
And that's sufficient.
But if this is continuing, I did not have a chance to see the video.
No, obviously not.
I will let someone else vote on.
So for this particular item, I'm going to appoint Mary Ellen Mataleska again to act in your stead.
Perfect.
I think we're not ready, sir.
Yes. Excuse me. Thank you. Thank you for having us again tonight and your time tonight. My name is Seamus Moran, a professional engineer in Connecticut. I work for H&amp;H Engineering Associates, and I'm the civil engineer representing the applicant, Generation Four LLC, who has joined, whose two members are with us tonight, Peter Zelkin and Kaylee Wyatt, and joined behind me. By these I'm joined behind me by these gentlemen, Russ Campaing from C Care Architects is the project architect, and Chad Frost from Kenton Frost is the landscape architect. So our project is 19 Jackson Avenue in downtown Mystic. We are here for a special permit and a CAM application. We opened this meeting back in, I believe it was May, received in May, noticed end of May, opened June 18th, and we just had to unfortunately keep continuing and extending it because we were also before the wetlands commission and that went on longer than we had expected. So this is our first presentation to you. Thankfully, we did receive our wetlands approval on August 1st. Prior to that, we received a positive referral from the police commission on May 9th, positive referral from the ADRC on June 10th, and we are here for you for a special permit, a public hearing. Our parcel is located in the LS5 district. It's 0.51 acres. It's mostly developed right now, almost 80% developed. There's two existing commercial buildings. The plan you see before you is the existing additions plan. There's an existing commercial building in the southeast corner and an existing building, commercial building along the northern property line as well. Both of those are one-story buildings and a very paved parking lot that goes right out to the street. This has been in, this has been owned by Generation Four recently, but it's been in the family for four generations, if you would believe the name, dating back to the 1920s when this was originally developed by the Mystic Oil Company. Mystic Oil Company is no longer here. Generation Four LLC is looking to redevelop the parcel, as you'll see in the next sheet, to create a mixed-use residential development, which in the LS5 is what triggers the special permit application. In the mixed-use residential requirements, 33% of the mixed-use has to be commercial and up to 67% can be residential. That is the, exactly the limits we have here. I think it's actually 34% and 66%. 34% commercial, 66% residential gross floor area. Now, what you see before you is that existing northern commercial building, that will remain with some minor cosmetic improvements, and another smaller storage building for the tenants will be installed in the back of that building. The west southeastern commercial building that I mentioned will be removed, is not, is no longer shown here. And what you see here is a triplex. It's a three-unit, three-bedroom townhome-style residential building. The lower level is, the first floor of living space is actually what looks like to be the second floor because of the base flood elevation. We're in the elevation 11 here. The lower level is just garage space. Each unit will have two car garages and some storage space. The living space starts essentially at elevation 16, which is above the base flood elevation. 16.3 is the finished floor elevation. There's two floors of living and then a rooftop deck. The parking spaces, you see here, there's nine surface parking spaces and those will go with the commercial space. 15 parking spaces are required, 15 parking spaces are provided between the six in the building and the nine surface parking spaces. You also see Kenton Frost, Chad will talk about this, along Jackson Avenue, which is to the west. On the sheet, there are two parallel parking spaces that we have shown, as I'm sure you're familiar, Jackson Avenue. People park along Jackson Avenue now. There's some parallel, unstriped parallel spaces now. We're looking to formalize those two spaces in the front, add a concrete walkway on our property, but along those parking spaces with accessible, with an accessible ramp to our access drive. To the rear of our property, between the nine surface parking spaces to the commercial building, we're proposing a ramp, walkway and a ramp to get up to that building. The stormwater management plan is, oh, I apologize, that's not the right sheet. I'm going to go to the next one. Here we go. That's the right one. So this here, this is actually, what you see here is a bio-retention trench along the backside of the parking lot. This was based on some iterative process we had through the wetlands commission and the town engineer. The first plan that we had was to infiltrate based on town engineer comments. That was the original design, was an infiltration trench to infiltrate and reduce peak rates of stormwater, which we did. The holdup at the wetlands commission level was, the site was a former Mystic Oil, so they were worried about contamination, so they didn't want to add surface water into the groundwater. So what we did was we went back to the town engineer, we discussed this, he agreed. What we did here instead is a bio-retention trench. It's between six inches and a foot deep of pooling area. And then what it is, it's a four-foot wide section of 18-inch deep soil mix, which is a combination of sand, 80% sand, 5% topsoil and 15% compost, which allows the stormwater to get into that soil mix, be treated, remove some of the nutrients from the stormwater. And at the bottom of that trench, there's a six-inch underdrain. That underdrain that you see here is this pipe that connects out to a new manhole. And the manhole that you see here is connected to some off-site improvements, which these off-site improvements you see here are from the CLA plan for that drainage ditch that's east of our property. So that's been completed. It is out to bid now, or soon to be out to bid, but it's been approved by the town engineer. So these improvements, the town engineer went back to CLA, added a catch basin and a manhole and a stub to get to our property, which we are now connecting into with our stormwater management system. So while it doesn't look like there's much on here, there was quite a bit of backstory to what you see on this plan here. So we do think it is actually, it is a qualitative and quantitative improvement of stormwater. We are capturing the stormwater from these building rooftops, from the front side of this building rooftop in the parking lot, in this bio-retention trench, treating it through that trench, bio-retention trench, and then, which I should point out, is lined with an impermeable liner. I guess that's a very important part of that. We're not infiltrating. We're allowing the water to get in there. It's lined with an impermeable trench. It gets into an underdrain and then it collects out and it goes into the town's system. Two last items from me are utilities, which are pretty quick. Public water and public sewer are available on Jackson Avenue. WPCA did review this and determine that the minor increase in flows is approvable. They reviewed it, they issued a letter essentially that said they approve it, it's allowed as long as we conform to their rules and regulations for the connections. Last but not least, soil erosion and sediment control. We do have a plan in place for that. Essentially, it's silk fence on the down gradient edge of disturbance, soil erosion sediment control matting on steep slopes, three to one or greater, a temporary soil stockpile area in the northeast corner, a construction entrance, and a concrete washout area, all shown on the plan here. And lastly, is a photometric plan, which shows the lighting fixture that was selected. Lighting affiliates is who we work with for this plan. There's only three fixtures on the property and that provides coverage to the parking lot and the access drive and all the parking spaces. It's a full cutoff, dark sky compliant light fixture that they selected, and that's on the photometric plan here. With that, actually, just quickly, the town comments that we received were very minor, but I should touch on those. The building official has no comments yet. We haven't submitted a building permit yet, of course, so I'm sure as soon as we submit the building permit, there will be some back and forth of comments from the building official. The police commission, as I mentioned, they didn't have any issues, positive referral back in May. The town engineer, in the notes, in the notes you have from June, he had some comments. Those have been addressed since then. He issued an email to Adriana on August 7th, I believe it was, saying that all of his comments have been addressed at this point. WPCA, as I mentioned, the flows are approved. We just have to connect further regulations. The CEO did not have any comments. The farm marshal did not have comments. DEP discourages improvements within the FEMA flood zone, but they recognize that our building is flood compliant. They recognize that the minor improvements to the commercial building do not trigger substantial improvement. So they're in agreement that we are FEMA compliant with our proposed development. And the only other things they mentioned were stormwater management. They would prefer a beefier stormwater management plan, but as I mentioned, we went around and around on that. And lastly, they discussed, there's no egress from the site. The whole area is flat. I think it's just boilerplate comments from them. There's nothing we can do about that, unfortunately, but our building is flood compliant. The building we're removing is not flood compliant, so it's an improvement to public health and safety, and we're doing all we can to, obviously to be flood compliant with our building. The only other, oh, I'm sorry, and then the town planner, one of the comments, one of the items that he mentioned is the, within your, there's a 15-foot buffer setback requirement in the LS5, I'll order a special permit. There's a section that Clifton put in there. Per special permit, there's an allowable, essentially substitution to do something different than that. The build, the existing building is 1.9 feet from the property line. We are proposing a six-foot tall fence, and that is our alternative, our substitute essentially to that buffer, and that is allowed by special permit for, based on your, based on your recommendation, based on our recommendation, you can hopefully see that through as an alternative to the 15-foot landscape buffer. And Chad, we'll talk about that in a moment here. And the last other item was, in the application, we had suggested or requested three waiver requests, one of them being the drainage modification, drainage structures waiver. We don't need that anymore because of all the iterations going back and forth, so we can remove that waiver request. The other two are the traffic impact study. It's a very minor increase in the actual use of the property. And the other is the archaeological, the property's been developed since 1920s. It's nearly fully developed, so we don't think there's any, an archaeological study is not warranted. Those are the waiver requests that we are asking for. With that, I think I'll pass it off to Chad, who is our landscape architect, who can go over our landscaping plan. Thank you.
Chad Frost from Kent Frost, landscape architect here for the record for the project. Fairly simple. As you can see, it's a very small site. It is currently very developed, right? Basically, edge to edge. As this redevelopment goes through, we're actually removing some of the commercial use to replace with residential use, and we're now allowing for some green space around. I'll start out on the edge on Jackson. As was alluded to, one of the things we did recommend was actually doing a streetscape. Right now, there is nothing. The road, Jackson Avenue, is paved all the way up to the pavement that starts in the parking lot and then paved from there all the way to the rear of the building. And the only thing that delineates anything out there is a chain link fence, and you can see right through everything. So what we recommended was actually formalizing it, putting in a concrete curb, formalizing two parallel spaces, creating the beginning of a streetscape, putting in the shade trees and things like that. We would love to get a third parallel space in here, but there's a CLMP pole there that serves other properties, not this property. If we can work with them to move that, we could add a third, but we're showing it right now as just a two because we can't guarantee that they'll be willing to play. Other than that, we landscaped every available space we could with native landscaping and trees. And then to note the buffer back here, in the LS5 buffer requirement, which is 8.4.2B, states that you, the commission, will evaluate buffers and screening of adjacent residential properties and may require screening or landscaping. So the way we read that in your regulation is that it is something that we can work through with you. And then further, it requires a 15-foot screening of for commercial use when it adjoins residential use. As we've stated, this is an existing commercial use. We're reducing the intensity of the commercial use by removing some of the commercial buildings already, replacing with residential. The new part of the development is residential, which is not commercial, so therefore might not even trigger that buffer requirement as it's written in your regulations. What we've tried to do, though, is provide as much as possible as we can, right? We're trying to get the parking that's required. That seven-foot space approximately really is just that very corner of the parking lot, which is necessary to get that one space in there. We're adding a solid wood screened fence all along there that's six feet tall. We're adding white pine trees along here, which is a screening tree that we don't often use because it does grow so quickly. But we want that to be in there, knowing that this building is effectively a three-story building, we can grow some height pretty quickly because the only real residential issue is kind of over here because we have a building blocking the views between all of them that's currently existing. Also note that the residence here at 32 Washington currently has a very large evergreen buffer on their side of the property line. So most likely, because whoever bought it 30 years ago was looking into this commercial use, they had planted their own, so there's a very substantial one along that whole property line currently. So adding another, say, seven feet worth of landscaping now probably doesn't do us any good, whereas we think the fence plus the white pines meets the intent of what your regulation is, which is why we think it's an acceptable solution. Short of that, as I mentioned, native landscaping all the way around, creating the streetscape. We are doing some things along this edge so that the streetscape can continue to the north if and when those properties redevelop or want to put it in or the town wants to put it in. But we're not continuing it specifically along there to force the neighbors to put in a sidewalk along their frontage or something like that. So we're accommodating it for in the future, but not kind of forcing the issue now. And that's really my quick landscape. Do you have any questions at the end?
Good evening. I'm Russell Campaing. I'm with CK Architects, and we're working closely to sort of develop primarily the new residential that's proposed on the property. And so to give a little bit more detail, we're proposing three townhouse-style units that are about 2,600 square feet, three-bedroom of living space, plus some additional entry, garage, storage on the lower level and a roof deck on the upper level. Basically, there's an entrance. This all has to be floodproof because it's below the floodline. There's an entrance that comes off the street. We have put the garages accessed from the back, which I think was well-received by the design review, and I think, really, I think will be well-received by the residential across the street. Really, although this is industrial zone, the feel of that area is, feels very residential, and I think this will, you know, step up to that. It'd be well-appreciated. We've received good accolades and feedback from the community. Coming into the units, there's a staircase up and an elevator with some storage. And then you come up to the main level and arrive. There's a kitchen, living area with a bedroom and a bath in the front, fireplace going out to a small terrace that looks toward the back of the garages. And the next level up, so this would be the third story, has a bedroom in the front with a private bath, has a master sort of primary bedroom in the back with its own en suite bathroom and a large closet. And then the stair continues up with the elevator to a roof terrace that takes in sort of the views of the downtown as well as the harbor. So we think this will fit in well. We've worked to keep the edges back and such so that it really is discreet, and we worked closely to develop the exterior, the materials and the style with the design review and came to sort of an Italianate style. It's more modernized a little bit, but has some of the lines that's very common in this area. So the bottom is going to be a brick with a wash on the first level. That's going to be the floodproof construction with the front entry and the front porch. There's a balcony above that's off of the bedroom on the second story. And then on the third story, and the roof deck has a balustrade that goes along, and the stairs and the elevators come up somewhat like a widow's walk kind of feature at the top. Fully compliant with regard to all the zoning requirements and coming around to the other elevations. So this is sort of very tight to the adjacent building. So we've sort of held up and put transom windows just above the roof line of the building that's to the south of the property with full windows that look down toward the train from that next level up. This is a very visible facade though on the south side. The back will have garage doors that are accessed from the back, that terrace that I was pointing out with large slider doors that come out from the main living space, and then the main suite windows on the top. And the last is the view that you do get as you come down Jackson. You'll see this sort of adjacent to the existing building that has a few additional windows and sort of views into the living space. But overall, I think in scale, it's a little larger. Obviously, it's through buildings, but I think the design review and we feel that actually the scale is broken down, the scale of the windows and such, it doesn't feel like too large a building within the area. And I think the 2,600 square foot of upper story. area, and I think the 2,600-square-foot of upper-story living space with the three bedrooms will be actually well-received in the area, it's a good scale for what I think the market is looking for. The existing building, which is a center block building, flat-roofed, we're proposing to put a pitched roof on the first three-quarters of the building that will address some roofing issues, it'll allow, though, to have the view from the newer adjacent units down onto the building to be a little bit better, and I think we are looking to, to utilize that south-facing for PV solar in the future, so that all works quite well. The back will be a roof terrace that's accessed for the commercial use, and a new staircase, sort of a fire-escape-style staircase that goes and wraps up to have access. This also gives access to the easy access for maintenance for the, the equipment, the mechanical equipment and such, so now it's difficult to maintain and such. So that's the thought behind it, and there's a very small storage piece that's off of the back as well, that's accessed with another staircase up to sort of the loading access that comes off of there, that's just a little, a little bit, that again is compliant with our request. So, you know, as I said, all the building lighting was approved, it's all full cutoff on the main building, the material palette was approved by the architectural review, we're looking at a probably cement-based siding, party or oral for the main building, but it's going to be painted and is acceptable from their standards. We're using probably a marven full cemented divided light window, it'll be a high-end exterior the way we're presenting it. So, if there's any other, we can answer questions.
While you're standing, is there colored rendering at all?
Yeah.
Yep. So this is the material palette that we submitted, that calls out the clavering siding, the brick on the lower story, the cemented divided light windows, and the synthetic railing systems, and the lighting that is proposed. And we do have, in your packet, a couple three-dimensional imagery, so you can see here as you're looking across, this is the existing building with the new cap that's on top, and a three-dimensional view of the front, from across the street. This is kind of the entry view as you come down, you can see there's a little landscaping, the front porches gives a little individual space for each of the units to have some identity, sort of a rowhouse kind of approach to it, and, but I think that, again, it breaks it down a little bit into individual pieces so that it isn't red as large a building. I don't, so the architectural review does not have control over the color, so I can't promise you it will be exactly this color, we might explore that a little bit, but, but this gives the sense that we'll look to the community to kind of find a color scheme and a trim that's in keeping with the historic context of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Any other questions for the presenters?
I did hear a community, but have you talked to the neighbors about this?
That's what I was going to ask, yeah.
Yes, I have talked to the neighbors.
And how's their reaction to it?
Worn.
Were there any concerns about either the lighting or going to three stories or the four, four-story with the, you're going to have the roof?
No, we got a couple neighbors come to several of the other hearings, you know, and we've had a couple conversations on the sidebar, and everything has been positive. I mean, I don't think anyone is really pleased with the use that it's had, it's basically storing boats and chain link, and I think in all cases, they're looking at this as definitely an improvement.
Okay.
So.
Okay, thank you.
What's the, what's the current use of the commercial building?
It's two offices, there's an audio/video kind of store and some storage in the front that he has, which probably will continue, he may move to the back because he wants a little bit more space, and then the generation four is, that's their main office space, and that will continue. So it's light, light office use, you know, the, the audio/video doesn't really receive anybody there, but has some storage of equipment, and basically has a home base for their employees and people who are in the neighborhood. And it probably will stay in those lines. We are, the floor is not FEMA compliant where it sits now, it would have to go up, I think, four additional feet in order to be compliant, so we're working within the constraints of the FEMA, which is below the 50% threshold over five years, which we're well within with what our proposals are. That will limit drastic change probably, but tenant outfit, I think we can, we're going to save enough so that there can be tenant outfits associated and keep that used.
Any other questions for the presenters?
So the neighbors on 32 Washington, they're the ones that you said had the tree, the large tree.
It's actually, I think, they're two down from that, not on the corner, but...
Right, so when you were doing your presentation, when you were talking about landscaping, you put in the pine, the white pine, and you said that this...
They have an existing large evergreen tree.
Right.
Yeah.
How far away is their house?
Their house is all the way out on the front of what is Washington.
Yeah, all, all of these houses sort of sit, these are garage and outbuildings that sit adjacent to here, but...
I just don't have a sense of, thank you, I just don't have a sense of how large those are.
Well...
I'm just, I'm just trying to, you know, is it 10 feet?
No, it's, this is all open backyard for that, like their house and everything is for, is off of the sheet.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then the timing of the tie-up of the floor, I guess, does that align with your project?
So we do think it does align, but if it doesn't align, they're, so what it is, is they, let me show you that then. So if it doesn't align, this pipe that they're proposing, we can propose the same pipe at the same elevation into the ditch that's there now, so that way, when they do fill the ditch, the pipe is over there. So they're, they're already moving forward, they're looking for bids to improve that now. Our construction, you know, we still have building permits, we still have structural design drawings, we're still a ways away from starting to dig, where they're looking for bids to start digging, so we do think it's going to line up pretty closely, and if for some reason it gets delayed by them, we can still, you know, our pipe is at an elevation, or their pipe, whatever, joint pipe, is at an elevation that it can discharge into the ditch that's there now.
Okay, but we don't want it to discharge into the ditch, right, we don't want it to be taken away by that pipe.
So the, this is a drainage ditch right now that goes to this point here, and then it goes underneath the rotor track, so it's, right now, it's a drainage ditch, and what they're doing is they're filling the drainage ditch and putting in pipes.
Right.
So, so they're just collecting the water from the drainage ditch into a 15-inch pipe and getting it out, so it's, whether it's a drainage ditch or a drainage pipe, it's still a drainage conveyance area.
Got it, thank you.
It's just no problem with that. Yes.
And I just wanted just to verify and confirm, the total height of the building, including the pool glass, is 390?
Yep, that's confirmed.
Thank you.
Also...
Yeah, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. There's a note in the town engineer's responses and comments, provide stormwater drainage report to include calculations for pre- and post-analysis. You talked about detailed conversations with the town engineer, would have seemed that this would already have been done.
Correct, so the memo you have is, I think it's dated June something, since that point, there have been some iterations, so his email from August 7th says it's all been addressed.
Okay, that makes, that makes sense, that is the case, right? Okay, and the, the property line that you share with the railroad, is that currently fenced?
No, it's not currently fenced. It's, there's a building there now, vegetation.
Oh, sure.
So what you see here now, this is the existing backside of the building, and the property line is almost right on the existing building, and this is vegetated here, back, right, right now, but if you walk behind the building, you can see the, you can see the rotor tracks. Unless there, unless there is a fence on, somewhere else on the rotor, I didn't see that, though, unfortunately, I didn't walk to the branch of the rotor tracks, the property. So I don't, if there is, maybe Peter can connect to that, is there a fence?
I'm just thinking it's commercial now, and we're going to residential, and your parking is in the rear. It seems that something should be put there to preclude someone from wandering, those are high-speed trains.
Makes sense.
So would you be willing to put something there, a fence?
Of course, I think that's a good suggestion, on the backside of our stormwater, so our stormwater bio-retention trench has to grade back up to the property line, I'm sure, I'm sure we're okay putting a fence along the property line to essentially from, maybe from the corner of this building around to prevent any, anybody from going in that direction. Peter, are you finding that?
It's pretty far away from that track.
Yeah, it's a spur that comes off that's right adjacent, right?
But it's, it's, it's now going to be residential, the parking lot is there, it seems that having no restriction from someone wandering off in that direction, and I'm thinking more of children than anything else, but, I mean, that's, that's now their backyard, it's a parking lot, but it's, it's the only area they have to recreate also, so it would seem to me that a fence would be prudent.
You know, they just put a fence along the tracks up near Co Road and that, that whole area.
And they did, yeah.
It's a, it's a tall, I mean, it's formidable.
I think the trains are going much faster there, but they did recently install a fence, not on the spur, it's not a spur, but it's, it's on the mainline track for the, for the Northeast.
It's a heavily walked area, it's like a little pasture path, I don't know whether it's for animals or what, getting on the tracks, but...
Right next to that nature wall.
Yeah, and it actually has like spike, not spike, but a curve coming out.
They are coming spike, yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty substantial.
But I don't know if we're asking you to put a fence like that there, but at least a fence that would keep children or somebody from going in.
I think children is what we're trying to preclude, so, you know, I wouldn't expect a, a six-foot chain link fence, you know, with, you know, a catchment on the top of it or anything like that, which you see typically along a railroad line, but something that's more aesthetic that would keep a child from wandering out there.
Sure, makes sense.
Okay, would you be willing to, if we put that as a stipulation, to do that?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions from any other members of the board? Clifton?
I had nothing additional in my report. We've covered the buffer element, which was the only thing I highlighted.
And the three recommended stipulations are, are still the three recommended stipulations?
There are three recommended stipulations, there were also three stipulations that will carry through from the wetlands permit that was received, they don't need to be re-added for our sake, but just there in the report, in case you are interested in them, I had no other comments or questions on this application.
Okay.
And Clifton, so we have three decisions to make on this, if I understand, so we have the waivers requested, the CAM application, and the special use permit, correct?
Correct, and you can, you can bundle that into one motion.
One motion, okay. So what is the commission's pleasure on the application of Generation Four LLC?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion of public, I'm sorry, oh, we have to, public hearing, we have to, sorry.
That's right, we do have to do that.
Getting ahead of ourselves.
Shame on me. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Oh, is there any public comment?
No, no one signed up.
Is there anybody else who would like to comment, who hasn't signed up?
Let me ask before we close the public hearing, would anyone else like to speak in favor or opposed to this application? Once again, would anyone else like to speak in favor or opposed to this application, or make any kind of a general comment? Hearing none, what's the commission's pleasure on closing the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close this public hearing.
Motion by Ryan, thank you, Ryan, is there a second?
A second motion.
Second by Gary, thank you, Gary. Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Chair votes aye, no extensions. The motion is approved, the public hearing is closed. Now the appropriate motion is ordered.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the application and the, also, the waivers that are requested, and to approve the coastal area management application, and the special use permit application to include the following three stipulations, actually four. Number one, final plan shall be reviewed to the satisfaction of the town engineer and town planner. Number two, final plan shall be signed by the commission and recorded in the town's land evidence records. Number three, the applicant shall post an erosion and sedimentation control bond prior to the issuance of a zoning permit, the bond shall be either in the form of certified check or irrevocable letter of credit meeting the requirements of VR 15.4.3. The bond amount shall be established by the town engineer after an estimate of the cost of installing and maintaining appropriate erosion and sedimentation control measures as provided by the applicant and approved by the town engineer, work shall remain bonded for a minimum of one year from the date of zoning compliance. And then number four was that the applicant will install a fence, a fence to prevent people from going over into the railroad yard in the back of the parking lot.
And that said design will be subject to review by the town engineer and town planner. Motion made to approve with four stipulations, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lynn, thank you, Lynn. Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any extensions? Chair votes aye, matter passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Nice presentation.
Okay. All right, moving on. We have the application of J&amp;H Mystic Hospitality, this is a carryover also, is it not? So we need a motion to reopen the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to reopen the public hearing for PZ 2411, SUP and CAM, J&amp;H Mystic Hospitality LLC.
Motion to reopen the, the matter for consideration in public hearing, is there a second?
Second motion.
Seconded by Gary, any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Chair votes aye. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I guess I would just ask to start, who will be seated for this?
It's the same, there's no change, so it would be myself, Lynn Conley, Gary, Brian, and Ms. Morrison.
And, Mr. Chair, just to say as well, I work for the adjoining property, so I'll abstain from, I don't think there's any conflict of, I don't see any benefit in any area, anything, but...
That's fine, so noted.
Is, is there Mary Ellen's seated?
I'm sorry, Mary Ellen, she was seated for the last public hearing, yeah, so there's no change.
Okay, just wanted to confirm that. And for the record, attorney John Casey with the law firm of Robinson &amp; Cole for the applicant with me tonight is Pete Perrin, from the, the project manager from CHA Solutions. So we're here continuing our public hearing, this is a proposal to transform the existing two-story Howard Johnson Motel into a three-story home to suites hotel, which will include necessary upgrades to the facility's fire and ADA accessibility, improvements to the overall site circulation and parking, and separating the hotel from the existing onsite Mystic Diner Restaurant. As I said before, the site appearance will be transformed significantly, but the change of use is not as significant. The restaurant use will remain unchanged, the hotel use remains the same, we are adding a floor, but only 17 rooms, going from 77 to 94. We're not adding 50% more rooms. So I just wanted to, I made that point first go-around, and I want to make sure that it's sort of fresh in your minds, this go-around. We were here in June, at that time, there were some questions about parking and traffic, so we went and did a traffic study, Pete will talk about that, and there's been some additional changes to the plans that Pete will, will discuss. So our plan tonight is to review the updated site plan, which includes more information about loading berths and the sign package, as well as review the traffic analysis and the shared parking analysis. When Pete's done, then I'll, I'll, I have some comments and some additional material about the special use permit standards and the coastal area management issues. So with that, I'll turn it over to Pete. So with that, I'll turn it over to Pete.
Good evening, as Mr. Casey indicated, I'm Pete Parent, professional engineer with CHA, and I think most of you probably all discussed it last time. So just a quick refresher, uh, the existing hotel and restaurant are connected, uh, in the area of the existing lobby area of the hotel, that will be removed, so that the two buildings are now separate, uh, and the existing hotel will be substantially renovated and a third story added. As part of the project, uh, substantial improvements to circulation, adding a, an access drive all the way around, uh, the building for fire, uh, and formalizing a lot of the parking, um, there's, there's a lot of parking spaces currently painted out onsite, but a lot of them are not compliant from a dimensional standpoint, either the space itself or the access aisle alongside of it. So we are ending up with a small reduction in parking versus existing conditions, but all of our proposed parking spaces are fully compliant with, uh, the regulations, and as part of the discussion we had last time, we did do a, a traffic study, um, you know, obviously, you know, admittedly limited to just our impact on the intersection, uh, where we took some counts, you know, turning movement counts at both the existing slip ramp entrance into the site, and at the signalized entrance into the site, and, um, at the driveway between our site and that access drive, sometimes referred to as Golden Boulevard Extension. Based on that information, um, we did conclude that the existing signal, um, you know, operates at a, you know, a relatively poor level of service, but the addition of the trips from our, you know, new seventeen rooms is not gonna have a substantial impact on that existing level of service. Um, and also in doing that, uh, by taking the counts at the, the driveway intersection, um, we kind of confirmed that the data that we've used before with the ITE and the urban planner, that those, um, parking counts were consistent with that, that data that we had from ITE that showed, you know, the shared use, um, and this number of parking spaces was, you know, adequate for the total impact. Uh, and just a couple of things that were noted, um, there's an existing loading zone, or proposing a loading zone in the area, the existing loading zone that is shared by the hotel and the restaurant, um, that continue to be a shared loading zone in this area, and then, you know, the hotel doesn't take any, you know, large deliveries, it's mostly, you know, FedEx, box trucks type stuff, so most of those vehicles would, would deliver right at the front entrance.
Just one quick question, you said that the signal operates at a relatively low level of service, I looked at the report quickly, is it a D?
It's, yeah, it's right on the cusp between a C and a D.
Okay.
So this is the, the signage package, uh, that is proposed, um, we're proposing to retain, uh, the existing pylon sign at the rear of the site, um, the existing Mystic Diner sign will remain as is, um, and the Howard Johnson sign will be replaced with the, the Home Two Suites of Hilton branded sign, uh, which is actually slightly smaller, um, square footage wise, than the existing sign in that location. Similarly, the sign out at, uh, Route twenty-seven in the driveway, um, the existing Mystic Diner sign will remain, and the rectangular, um, sign for the Howard Johnson will be replaced with Home Two. These are the directional signs within the site, and these are the two, uh, different signs that would be mounted to the building itself. They're, they're obviously identical, they're just slightly larger sign, uh, to the, the main entry, um, and then this is an example of, uh, what they typically use for a construction sign.
So the, uh, the sign in the back, uh, that goes along the highway and faces the highway?
Yes, I think, you know, I think most of you are probably familiar, as you're coming along ninety-five, it, it opens up briefly, and there's, there's the sign that you can see from the highway, um, it has the Mystic Diner on top, and currently has the, the small Howard Johnson sign that needs to be upgraded to the, the Home Two. So other than that, I don't believe there have been any substantial changes to the design, um, so happy to entertain any questions. I know that there was some, some comments that we received from the town engineer on drainage system, infiltration testing and all that stuff is, you know, certainly things that we comply with, um, you know, there's no major issues there.
Is, um, are you still expecting to close off with the Route twenty-seven kind of right-only turn, and so everything will only filter through the light?
So, so that is our proposal, I know that there has been some question and discussion on that, um, certainly, we feel that the, the benefit of having that, that slip ramp, you know, three car lengths away from the intersection versus kind of having everybody use that, you know, fully actuated signalized intersection that's there for a purpose, um, is limited, um, we think that, you know, we're, we're better off having everybody use that signalized intersection, um, certainly, it's open to discussion if the commission feels differently, but that, that's currently our proposal.
Does it have any impact on levels of service?
It, we do not believe so, I mean, like we said, as this, as this queues, you get three cars here and then nobody can take it, so it's, it's not a major impact on it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I've seen it where people suddenly realize they can make that quick right turn, and it could cause some people to slam the brakes on because they don't realize they can do it. It's not, well, I think it would be safer to have everybody use the light, at least everybody knows exactly where they're going.
I, I think there's a lot of decisions, a lot of people get in the wrong lane, you know, to go south to Mystic at that location, there's a lot of weaving that takes place in a short distance, uh, you know, to get in the, the lane to, to turn left, uh, at the last minute, and any confusion that can be eliminated, I think, would be an enhancement to safety. Uh, after, after everybody's stopped, the only people that can get in there is the car that's queued, and as you said, when traffic's moving, almost everybody goes to the intersection.
What does that mean, uh, that light gets between a C and a D, what does, what does that mean?
So the levels of service are based on how long you would have to wait to be able to take your turn, basically. Um, I, I, not a traffic engineer, so I don't know the numbers specifically, but, um, there's only C, D, and F, so it's like, you know, grades at school. This one's operating at a low C, high D, um, level, um, during, you know, our, our investigation.
How about during, during other peaks, you know, the, this is just for the, the traffic counts and...
Yeah, so we did, our traffic counts on a weekday, uh, which is, you know, what ITE indicated would be that the peak hours for this, these particular uses, um, you know, we've heard from some others that, you know, obviously on a busy weekend, you know, you can get back up all the way onto the highway, you know, obviously those are F and worse level of service, uh, type events, but in a, you know, a general, you know, typical day, it's operating in that, that C to D range.
Did, so, uh, if I could, so could you just tell what, what were the dates you did your...
So I believe it was a Tuesday in June, June eighteenth, maybe?
For one day?
Yes.
On Tuesday in June.
So how to peak summer day, when things are really bad, at that intersection?
The, the, the idea of the, to traffic counts that we did, and the study that we did, was to determine what impact the changes on our site would have on that intersection. So, when the, when the background...
I think we're looking at all the standard parameters, and I don't think anybody said pick the lowest day of the week, lowest day of the month.
I don't, I don't think, but, hear me out here, if our, if our impact on a Tuesday is insignificant, our impact in the background traffic here increases, is gonna be even less, from a percentage perspective.
I'm just thinking, you have across the street, you know, you have the, you know, old Mystic Village, they have fairs, all that kind of stuff, on weekends usually, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. I would be interested to know what the traffic study with your additions would be on those kind of days.
Right.
Because that's the, the concern I think most people would have, is, okay, you're adding even just a little bit, I don't, you know, I'm not a traffic engineer, I'm just saying, I would be curious to see what it would be on a weekend when people are pulling off and looking around, and a lot more people are coming into town than on a Tuesday.
I mean, we've seen situations, all of us have seen it, where the traffic just backed up onto the highway, on that ramp, and it's frequent.
I mean, I understand what you're saying, that, that percentage-wise, it's smaller the more cars you have on a, on a busier weekend, but the concern is that on a busier weekend, everything's backing up so much more, that your like increment, your little tiny bit is just gonna make it, things a lot worse.
Right, and you have, based on our previous conversation...
On like a Saturday of art festival weekend.
Based on our previous conversation here, that we weren't looking at a global, you know, review of that intersection, which obviously would require, you know, a very comprehensive traffic, we were only looking at what our additional trips would do, and, you know, from the perspective of doing that, you know, taking a, a lower day shows a more change, you know, a larger change from a percentage perspective, um, so, yeah, I agree, you know, every increment counts, but...
But on a lower day, it's not an issue, it's an issue on the bigger days.
But it, it's, it's not.
It is not.
I, I agree with, I agree with, uh, Alyssa, I think that, uh, you know, it's, it's the critical times where even a small number of vehicles will push you into a level of service F, and, and, uh, you know, to put that in perspective, I think I would have contacted DOT, and I would have gotten the traffic counts from DOT, so you could have put the traffic counts in your day into perspective. Is it a low day, is it a, a medium day, is it, you know, what kind of a day is it?
That's exactly the same thing.
I'll say the last time that this public hearing was opened, um, the commission made these exact same comments, and their request to the applicant was to go out and do additional counts, and so they took the original traffic study that they provided, and they've already, they did supplement with additional counts...
Okay.
...in June to add into what's already been crewed through DOT data, um, and when we also did have this discussion at the last public hearing, the, the issue of the larger intersection was raised, um, and my comment then and my comment still now is that this applicant is not responsible for the larger ineffectiveness of that intersection, that's a DOT problem. So what, the commission, the commission has to look at...
I wholeheartedly agree that, that it is, but...
Is the impact which their report states is eight peak trips.
But it's the background traffic that, that, you know, was used to formulate that analysis that concerns me, and, and I still think that, you know, on a, on a more typical day, not Tuesday, uh, you know, which is typically, in terms of the daily variations, probably one of the lower days, uh, is not gonna answer our question.
I would agree, I would, I would have taken the DOT counts and added, like, find the, you know, look at the counts every day, find the highest day, and then add your numbers to that, and I'm not seeing that in the report. I'm brand new to the commission, so maybe I'm speaking out of turn, and I'm sorry if I'm butting into my...
No, you're not, you're not, we welcome your comments.
I think what he's saying is that if on the peak day, let's say it's a hundred percent more, and they're still only adding eight...
No, I understand what he's saying.
...percentage of their impact. I personally think that this is a problem, right, and I, I don't know if you say there's a moratorium on development until, because it's a problem, until this is fixed. Now, who's responsible for making sure it's fixed? I'm not sure, but you, you can't have that area backed up like that. So maybe it's a moratorium.
I mean, I think, I...
If I could just say, Mr. Chairman, to the point that Clifton made, it's a bad intersection, and it, it's a bad intersection, I live in town, I have to drive through it, um, I, I think I would ask you to focus on this application. I, I mean, on a Saturday, it's gonna be bad, on a Saturday that there's a chowder festival across the street, or the art festival downtown, there's gonna be more people coming into town on a Saturday or a Sunday after, you know, a chef downtown gets named a James Beard winner, and more people say, I wanna go to that restaurant, it's gonna be bad, but to, I, I don't think you could put it on this applicant to try or blame them for, for that intersection. I think the focus is, what is the impact of this proposal to add seventeen rooms with a maximum of eight trips, four in, four out, not, not eight in and eight out, four in, four out, in any peak hour? That's not a lot, and so I'd ask you to focus on that, and whether that traffic study was done in, on a Tuesday or a Saturday, it, it'll be worse, but it won't be worse on a Saturday because of anything we're proposing. If we do nothing at this property, the traffic's gonna be the same. Whether we confirm everyone's, uh, subjective belief about this intersection with numbers doesn't change what the, the science, what our traffic study shows, you know, what's gonna be the impact of this. So we're adding eight trips, peak hour, to a bad situation. I, I, if it's F on a Saturday at noon, it's gonna be F on a Saturday at noon, before or after this. If it's a C on a Tuesday, it's gonna be a C or a D, and, and I think that's what it shows, and you could do studies till the cows come home. I don't think it's gonna change the impact of this application, and that's all I would ask you to focus on, when it comes to the, to the traffic.
I don't think we're asking you to fix the, fix the, the interchange as a part of this project, but please don't...
No, 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 I guess maybe I...
What I do is understand, does this drive it to a lower level of service, uh, in, in, you know, a peak period of time, and on frequent occasions?
I, I would say if it's, if there was no traffic, and we added, you know, four new cars in and out, it wouldn't, it wouldn't make a difference, and so if there's a thousand cars, adding four cars in and out is not gonna make a difference.
Well, there has to be, there has to be a cutoff, whether it's one extra car, four extra car, or four hundred, there is a cutoff...
Right.
...of when it's a D and an F.
No.
And so it could, on that day, for four cars, make it go from a D to an F, and that's what we wanna know.
But certainly the situation where you folks are describing with traffic backing up here onto the I-95 ramp, that, that's objectively an F. Yeah.
Yeah, but I guess, I guess to...
I think that's the extreme, you know, we're not laying that on you as, as a baseline.
No, and I wanna make clear, we're not trying to lay that on you, we realize that, A, that intersection has its own inherent problems, and you have other properties and activities that go on around your property that add to the traffic patterns, so, I, I understand that, and I, I think the only thing we wanted was to, you know, maybe, I would have liked you to have picked a Friday, just 'cause, but you've, uh, from what I understand from Clifton, fulfilled the ask that we had, had from the prior, uh, hearing, so, you know, I can't, I can't fault you on that, um, you provided the additional data as requested.
And I guess my point would be, knowing, you know, the exact numbers on a Saturday, I, I think it'd be interest, may be interesting to know, but at the end of the day, I don't think it changes how this project impacts traffic.
Would that change the number of cars turning in and leaving, or is that generated from the size of the hotel and origins and destinations that are sold?
So the, the, the proposed numbers are based on ITE data.
Okay, but how about, how about the timing of it?
Yeah, so that, that's all based on that, the ITE data that shows, okay, you know, these are your peak hours, this is what you can expect for trips in versus out, you know, and we just added that to the, the actual physical counts that we took, and said, okay, right now there's thirty-seven trips in, in a peak hour, we're gonna add two, it's gonna be thirty-nine. Does that change the signal? No.
Okay. All right, please proceed.
Yeah, so, yeah, I think, um, we're, we don't have anything else to present, so we're happy to answer any questions that you folks have.
We had some questions, uh, that were unanswered from the last meeting also on the drainage, um, there is a encroachment permit that's gonna be required, and a rigorous set of drainage calculations that are gonna be required by DOT to, to basically discharge directly into their system.
So we submitted to DOT, um, they came back with some initial comments, um, to my, to my surprise, nothing on the drainage system itself.
Just describe the drainage system again for, if you would.
Sure, so, under existing conditions, the, the site is kind of divided into two halves. The, the western half drains to an existing catch basin in the back corner here, that then discharges to a swale that runs between the property and ninety-five, is collected by a head wall here that is then piped out to the Mystic River. The eastern half of the property drains through a series of catch basins that discharge to a small water quality basin, uh, in this location on the, the corner, that then discharges...
that then discharges into the drainage system with then Route 27. Uh, under proposed conditions, we're kinda trying to keep that divide. We're taking this, this eastern half and bringing it into a central catch basin here. Uh, we're providing hydrodynamic separator to provide some water quality treatment prior to entering into the water quality basin. And then we're providing an outlet control structure to, to kind of more efficiently use the volume. That's when the, then a water quality basin provides some additional detention, provides some additional water quality treatment prior to discharge.
No additional detention on your property though?
No, no additional detention on our property in this situation. We're using the, the existing water quality basin as kind of, you know.
That's the part that seemed to me to be very difficult to push by the energy.
That, that water quality basin is, is in a, an unusual spot, right? I think, you know, prior to some takings for the ramps, I think it was probably all on our property. And you can see the property line kinda cuts it in half now.
Do you think at all about, you know, diffusers on site?
Uh, so we're, we're doing that in the back, on the, on the western half.
I know that, but it's floodwaterside. I'm talking about the discharge.
We, we did not. No, because this is, this part of the property is remaining very similar to existing from an impervious, you know, area. We're kinda just formalizing the existing parking. We're not changing the building. Um, we're actually reducing some impervious area down here. So from an impervious cover standpoint, the, the impervious area that's coming from this eastern half into this water quality basin is staying relatively the same.
Okay.
Um, on the western half, obviously we're adding all this parking and this access for the fire apparatus to be able to go all the way around the building. So we're adding a considerable amount of impervious area on this side. So that, that drainage system is being collected by a series of catch basins, providing water quality treatment units on either side of an underground detention system. We're proposing a storm trap system here. And then that would discharge into a, a manhole that would be used for outlet control and then discharged into that existing head wall connection. And then discharging out to Mystic River.
Is there any tidal effect, you know, acting as a tailwater in that location?
We're far enough up that it, there's no, no tidal, yeah. Uh, so overall, you know, we are increasing the impervious area of the site slightly with this, with the asterisk drive and this additional parking area here. Um, but right now, all of this discharges into the state scanner system on either end of the site without any treatment.
I see your point about impervious.
Yeah. Um, so, you know, this is, you know, a marked improvement from a water quality standpoint. This project was designed with the, the 2024 guidelines. Um, so reducing the two-year storm by 50% from a peak flow standpoint. Um, providing, you know, substantial water quality improvements and matching or reducing all peak flows through the 100-year storm with this drainage system.
Thank you.
Can you just comment, because it's also coastal area management, about how the improved water quality applies with the, the policies?
So certainly, so, um, like I said, you know, under existing conditions, all of this discharges without any treatment. So there's no sediment removal, no nutrient removal. But the addition of, of the hydrodynamic separator for providing pre-treatment, which is gonna make this water quality basement and this underground detention slash infiltration system function more, you know, more efficiently. I won't be dealing with the, the heavy sand content that would get in there. And then there is a requirement, you know, in order to reduce that, that two-year peak storm, we've gotta capture, you know, a certain volume of water on site and infiltrate it, um, which is gonna provide, you know, first flush treatment and significantly improve the water that's discharging from this site into those drainage systems. Certainly, overall, the water in those drainage systems is probably still not fantastic, but.
And you mentioned, um, uh, the, I'm sorry, the comments from the town engineer, just so we have it on the record, they're in, they're in, um, the planner's, uh, report. There's a comment that those could be, uh, included if the, the commission was willing to approve, that those could be stipulation of approval. Can you sort of touch on those?
Yeah, so, uh, I think the, the main gist of the, um, the town engineer's comments were in regards to wanting to see some infiltration testing below these detention areas. We're not using infiltration to counteract our peak flow, but we are assuming that the system is going to drain in between storms. So in order to kind of verify that and, you know, also verify that that water is going to infiltrate and make our water quality, we'd like to see some infiltration testing in this area, which is something we can clearly comply with. Um, and then there was also a comment about erosion and sediment control. He wanted to see an, in construction kind of phased erosion and sediment control plan, which is something that we could certainly provide, you know, providing, you know, locations of stockpiles and, you know, concrete washout areas and that sort of thing. One point, I'm, I'm totally confident that we can address anything that Bob Blue came up with, but his town engineer's letter references comments from CLA, but I haven't seen the comments from CLA. But I don't know if Bob deleted anything less than fair, so I'm sure we can.
I'll, I'll check on that.
Yeah, there's number nine. I'm sorry, I didn't follow up with that after we saw this. In regard to some of the other comments, um, Pete went to the, um, uh, police commission on the 8th. They had noted no additional concerns, but we know in the planner's comments that the, the chief has requested, um, did the application go back before the police commission to discuss parking and traffic concerns? Um, I don't know if that's in response to Bill Middleton's, um, email. I assume it is. So, but it, I think those are the topics that we discussed here tonight. We're happy to go back to them, but we would explain the same information. I, Pete can explain maybe what happened at that meeting. I'd assume you discussed the traffic counts and, and analysis.
Yeah, so we had a similar discussion as we just had tonight on the, the traffic situation and how, you know, that, that signal obviously has times where it operates poorly. Um, but that, you know, the, the additional traffic that we're proposing to add to it is, is not going to significantly impact, you know, that, that function. And then, um, I think, what Attorney Casey was kind of alluding to, there's some comment about, um, this, this entrance and how we're modifying it. The existing entrance here is about 45 feet wide. Previously approved plan for the adjacent hotel showed narrowing that entrance to 30 feet and kind of providing some, some pretty sharp radii on these turns. That those radii just didn't function in order to get the fire apparatus into the site. Um, so we're, we're proposing that throat to be at 34 feet and then having, you know, some more generous radii here to allow for that turning movement.
So we are trying to fit in with that site plan approval to the greatest extent possible, but the geometry requires four more feet, you know, than, than what was approved. We feel that's sort of a minor, uh, change and for appropriate reason to get the, the fire apparatus in there. I think just touching on Bill's other comments, you know, he touched on the traffic and the traffic study. We've already addressed those. As to the parking, we have the parking analysis in there. We're asking for a shared parking, uh, approval based on the numbers, based on the study that we have. I think if you have any questions about that, Pete would be happy to answer those. Moving on, some of the other comments. Some of them haven't changed, like from the Water Pollution Control Authority. Obviously, we know there's a moratorium. We, we're looking for this approval so we can get on the waiting list and then move the project forward appropriately at the time. Uh, you had the fire marshals' comments. He's generally in favor. This is a great improvement from, uh, life safety, uh, aspect, having the complete roadway system around to get the apparatus to all sides of the building. Also to upgrade the building itself. So he was in favor. You had the ADRB, uh, comments on the architectural design. We can comply with those. We had a long meeting with them. There's a lot about the colors and you can put the dark color on the top or on the bottom. But, uh, they, uh, the comments are what they are and we can, we can comply with that. You know, this is a branded hotel. It does have certain colors and signs that, that are required based on the contract, so, um, so everything in their comments, uh, we can comply with.
Including going back to the police commission?
We, yeah, we can go back to the police commission, yeah.
Before we act on it?
Um, yeah, because you, you don't have to make a decision this evening if we close the public hearing, so.
We don't have enough days to extend the public hearing.
Right, don't we have 35 more days?
Can we extend it?
23 days left to extend.
Okay. Well, we can close the public hearing. You don't have to make a decision tonight. And you can get those comments and, and consider them as part of your.
Understood. It's always, you know, preferable to have the. To leave it open, discuss it at a public hearing so that the public has an opportunity to see it as well and comment on it. But I'm, I'm not saying it's impossible.
No, we could grant you that as much time as we have. But it's, if it's only, it would only get us to the early September meeting.
Probably closing the public hearing, as we've discussed in other applications, is that the applicant isn't allowed to make additional changes once the public hearing is closed. So it's a roll of the dice figuratively speaking of the police commission. After approving it already, chooses to not request additional changes.
So we have 23 days from tonight.
I don't know what that gets us to.
The September 4th.
Is that the next meeting?
It's either the 15th or the 16th, so it's a day before the regular, next regular meeting.
And you're not, you don't have an early meeting?
No, not.
A special meeting?
Because of Labor Day.
Oh, that's right. So I, and I doubt you have a special meeting just for this, but if you're willing, we can grant you the time, but it doesn't get you to a meeting. That's the only problem. So the only way to, to make that beneficial is to have a special meeting.
Well, I have one question.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll just continue just.
We're not ready to close the public hearing.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, yeah.
We're just, we're just talking about that as an option.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, and we're gonna complete the meeting first.
Yeah, so just moving on to Clifton's comments. He had three issues when we started with this. Two that have been, uh, addressed was the, the loading berth, uh, and the signage plan. He has still had some questions about the, the seating at the restaurant because now that COVID is over, uh, we need to account for all the seats at the restaurant. So it's, um, it's sort of buried in the, the report, uh, the, the number of seats. And I'll just say for the record, so there's 100, 221 seats inside the restaurant and, uh, 34 seats outside. So I have, and I'll just, if I can find it. And I can, this was provided by the operator. It's pretty simple, but I could email you a copy list.
In two seconds.
Just so you have it in the record. It just shows the, the layout. So just to, just to clarify, so 34 seats, um, outside. And we were, um, our intention is to sort of legitimize all that seating with the parking plan, that the shared parking plan would cover the total number of restaurant seats, 255, uh, seats, as well as the, um, additional hotel rooms. So with that, I think. Well, I'll just, I'll touch on this. We asked for some waivers. Um, the water, water impact study, sanitary sewer, sewer impact study. We had asked for the traffic impact study waiver, but obviously we provided that. Archaeological studies, soils report, shadow plan, flood hazard report and school impact. So we still asked for those waivers. And I guess with that, I'll just wrap up by saying, so.
No, we do have a few more questions also.
Oh, okay, then I'll wrap up. Okay.
Lynn?
Um, I have a few questions.
Sure.
The, uh, proposed shared housing plan takes, I just wanna make sure, you're saying shared between the restaurant, this hotel and the hotel next to it? Or just this hotel?
No, just this, just this.
Okay. And did you go over, because it's not ringing the bell, your, um, your landscaping plan?
Sure. Uh, so the, the intent of the landscaping is to kind of beautify the, the edge of this property as you're entering on as much as possible. So, you know, one of the things that we're doing with that, that drive aisle that we're eliminating is kind of creating another landscape bed here with some good trees, some additional, um, low shrubs, um, providing additional shade trees and shrubbery along the parking here to kind of, you know, dress up the front of the building. Um, and then, you know, provide some additional buffer between this and, uh, 95 corridor. And then where we can, we're providing some additional shade trees in between the, the two hotel uses.
And there, is there any other island in between the two hotel uses other than the one in the there?
No, this is a relatively narrow island here that exists between the property line.
And is that gonna be grass?
It is intended to be landscaped, you know, grass with these trees. It's mulched beds and that's what I think.
Okay. And then where the restaurant is, this area with the fence and all this. Now I see there you've got a couple bushes right there.
Here.
Yeah. Um, are you planning to redo the fence and all that or what are you, what are you doing with that?
So I don't believe there's any intention to completely renovate the front of the restaurant.
That's where, that's where the outdoor seating is.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's where the outdoor seating is. And so you're not, and right now the outdoor seating kind of has like a, uh, I don't know, like a little wrought iron.
Okay.
Guard rail kind of fence, not guard rail, that's wrong.
Just got like a decorative aluminum.
Yeah, there's nothing there. Are you planning to do anything to dress that up?
That's really the diner operators business.
Okay. Um, and then you're eliminating the pool, right?
No, this, this hotel still has a pool, it's just in a slightly different location.
Uh, where is it?
Uh, so the existing pool. The existing pool is, is kind of in this bump out and the new pool would still be in that same location. It's just shifted into the site a little bit.
And are you gonna do any kind of landscaping around the pool?
Well, it's, it's indoor.
Oh, it's gonna be an indoor pool?
Yeah, so the, the outdoor pool is on the adjacent property.
It's on the adjacent property, sorry, I'm kind of confused. And then my last question has to do, well, I have two other questions. The sign, the signage. What's the lighting associated with the signage?
So, Clifton, I believe that the signs are allowed to be downlit, correct? Or is it?
Backlit.
Backlit, backlit and not haloed. Yeah, so the, the signs on the building are intended to be, be backlit. These two signs are not currently lit and I don't believe there's any intention for that to be lit.
Those two smaller signs, the one facing the highway and the smaller one, are pre-existing non-conforming signs. So as long as they're not increased, they can stay as part of the project. And the content of them doesn't matter.
Okay. And then I would like to understand what the architectural review board comments were. Could you go through them and how you plan to adjust them?
Yeah, I'll try. Um, so do you have the, do you have that?
I don't have our.
I don't have our special plans, no. I know they're in your packet.
They would have been in the previously distributed packet.
Right.
There was a detailed rendering provided to as part of the ADRB review, but was in the original packet set.
Right.
And there being the consistent, or the stipulations that the ADRB came up with were to change the color combinations between the lower and the upper ethos. And so their summary included in the report is just to basically describing what color changes that they wanted. That were a differentiation from the rendering that was provided.
And did we agree, did you agree to do that?
Yes.
They did, it was stipulated as part of their approval that they would provide updated architectural plans to us. Those haven't been provided yet.
Okay.
But that would be a stipulation that you could carry through to approval as well.
Okay.
The only other comment that they had was to make sure that when they broke up the structure between the existing restaurant and the hotel use, that there was a consistent architectural feel of the diner use that would be maintained, and that was their other stipulation.
That's the one facade of the diner that would change, so they would wrap that mansard roof around the back, so in that courtyard area, you wouldn't be, right, there's nothing there, it's connected to the building, so they're going to have to clean that up in some way.
But you haven't done that yet, you haven't rendered those new plans?
There was a rendering that was provided to the ADRB.
There was renderings and samples provided, but not ones that matched the end result stipulations. Those can be provided as part of the architectural plans upon approval.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Can you?
That concludes your question?
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions of the applicant?
Can you, can you go through all your parking calculations, I'm really confused?
Sure.
I was just saying like a lot of different numbers on all these different plans. Like how many seats you have inside, how many you have outside, what's allowed, unemployed, who's paid?
So per code, we're supposed to have one space per hotel unit plus one space per employee. And then that would require a hundred and six spaces for the ninety-four rooms and the anticipated peak employees. The restaurant requires one space for every three seats and one space per employee. That would be forty-five spaces, if I recall correctly.
So you want to get three seats?
That was based on? That was based on interior spaces, not including the outside.
You have two-hundred-and-twenty-one seats plus thirty and change for outside?
Yeah, so.
You have two-hundred-and-fifty seats.
Yeah, two-hundred-and-fifty plus.
Two-fifty-five.
Two-fifty-five, so, all right, let me just get my pocket.
Eighty-six seats.
So you did eighty-six seats, and you have a hundred and six, so that, so that's, you know, two and then carry the one, and that's not, and that's a hundred and ninety-two?
Yes.
And you have a hundred and fifty-two?
Yes, so what we did was we took IT parking generation data in addition to some urban land use, shared parking data that's available. And based on the two uses coexisting on a single.
Because the hotel people are going to the restaurant.
Right, and the restaurant people are staying at the hotel. So based on that data, we were showing that you could substantially reduce that peak demand. And based on the counts we took at the driveways, that data matched up pretty well with the IT and urban planning data. So we feel that that analysis that we provided is valid.
And how many are there now, partners?
There's a hundred and sixty-five spaces painted on the ground. I would hazard it to tell you that most, not, a fair percentage of them, they're not compliant spaces. You'll see. So you'll see, you know, there, these spaces here, you know, that's a sixteen-foot drive aisle with two-way traffic. These spaces here are not compliant from a dimensional standpoint, these spaces here are like twelve feet long. There's, there's spaces that are painted on the ground there that are not actually compliant spaces.
I've been said, I've been said, you can't park anywhere near it. You know, I'm, I'm parking over at the Italian restaurant.
Exactly, exactly.
Right now, and adding more, I don't think you have enough parking. Just saying, that's just my two cents on this application. Yeah, I've never been able to park, I've never been able to park there on a weekend.
We are formalizing the, the parking that exists.
Yeah.
And improving it, and based on the. Based on the counts that we've taken and the data that's out there.
Any additional questions of the applicant's attorney or engineer?
Clifton?
Attorney Casey went through the majority of my comments. And it will take the additional seating arrangement to account for the exterior seats, which meets part of what I was requesting under my comments. I'll make a note that in the report, I included the request from the chief of police regarding going back before the police, police commission. That was based off an email conversation dated August sixteenth, where the owner of the adjacent hotel and restaurant provided public comment to myself and copied the chief on that email. And that was the chief's response that he wants to go back before the police commission. What the owner of that property stated in the report are consistent with some of the concerns raised by the commission tonight. Parking on-site, closing the right turn ingress-only location, queuing issues, just generally issues related to that intersection and going onto the highway. One of the other comments made that hasn't been verified by myself was regarding that there's a leased shared parking agreement between the diner and the owner of that property. That hasn't been validated by myself, and it also hasn't been approved by the commission in any capacity of which it would need to be. So we would need to explore that in a bit greater depth because if the adjacent property is conducting a shared parking agreement with this property, those need to be.
Which adjacent property is that?
Usually the.
This would be, this would be the hotel.
The Italian restaurant has a, has a shared parking with these people?
That was what was stated in the email, but it wasn't verified.
The restaurant has got a shared model, that's what they're claiming by day.
Correct, and so the diner allows the restaurant to use, the restaurant to do some of that parking, vice versa.
I just read it, says the Mystic Diner had to lease for additional parking spaces with my property, as they did with the prior owner. Again, the Mystic Diner is a separate entity.
This application is all for one.
It is.
It is, it is, yeah.
Close the diner, then close the diner.
But again, so, but my point being, we have no way, we don't have direct access to that owner, I mean, and this was sort of a leak.
I'm just, I'm, yeah, I'm seeing that one says, just, one, it's public comment, we have to take that at a certain level. But I will also say that if that arrangement does exist in any capacity of which it hasn't been verified, that need, that would need commission approval in order to do that, even though those are between private entities. Because those parking calculations will flip-flop onto one another. So I wouldn't say that that should impact the commission's decision on this application. I would say that if there is something that needs to be addressed, that'll be addressed through myself and staff and come back before the commission at a relevant time if needed. I did receive additional other public comment that I have in the file related to concerns from the Mystic Diner owner themselves. And the operation and the parking-related issues that have been brought up. And then I've also received some commentary from representatives of Old Mystic Village across the street, which I believe are here to speak in terms of public comments, so I'm not going to speak on their behalf. But just to say, the public comment has kind of been, so far has been very similar to what the commission has already raised as questions and concerns. So I would just say that, you know, how you choose to approach and move forward through this process is going to be consistent with questions raised elsewhere that we haven't heard at this time. The other items I mentioned, or I noted in my report include the ADRB requirements, of which could be added as an additional stipulation beyond what I've already included. And then the final item, you know, as we've been discussing, the ingress-only issue, level of service issues, traffic at that intersection. This project still has to go in some capacity before DOT and OSTA to be approved. If there are changes required through those entities, which are the qualified ones to make those decisions, those would just be circulated back through the commission as we've done with other projects. We've done one tonight as administrative review. So I'll say that, you know, as you're, as you're, as you're making, or considering deciding or closing the public hearing tonight and potentially deciding at a later date or deciding tonight. Those issues related to what's happening on twenty-seven are going to be decided elsewhere.
Thank you. Any further comments? Anyone have any questions of Clifton?
I do, so Clifton, if there was shared, some kind of a shared agreement between whichever, right? And it turns out because of that shared agreement, there's not enough parking, right? And we approve this, this is approved. Because the agreement did not come before the commission, right? Then.
The burden of that shared agreement is actually on the adjacent property owner not complying, not this property owner not complying.
Okay.
Because that parking across the, across that aisle is being used for a, for a different use across the way on a different property. So it's actually the burden of that property owner, not this property owner.
So did you look into the?
I haven't been able to validate whether or not that there was a shared parking agreement, yeah.
But when, when we approved the, the other property.
Oh, yeah, I'm on your comfortable on that.
Yeah, and was that in the minutes at all?
It didn't, it didn't come up in the conversation because it was a minor addition and some landscaping work that was being done. So it actually was approved under administrative review and not a full site plan application because of the scale of work that was being done. One of them was changing the throw as, throw of the adjacent property as mentioned. But the changes that were approved at that time were so minor that the parking situation didn't come up because there wasn't a tangible change.
So if, if, if that does come back up, does that put then on DiAmo, and I know it's not on them, does that put them into non-conforming? And then what, you know, what would be the ramification if that actually is there to on DiAmo?
Again, I, you know, it's, it was just, it was mentioned in the email, and I haven't validated it, so I won't speak of whether or not it's a violation or not. It could have been captured elsewhere in a different approval process. Again, I haven't been able to.
Yeah, no, it's just an interest in laundry, pickle.
It is.
But it's, it's something to weigh and concern that if there's.
It's kind of like, kind of like a musical chairs thing, you know.
Well, I think a lot of the public comment that's been provided so far, and we heard at the last public hearing, is circled around this concept of people parking one place and go to a different place, and they don't move their car every time. And so if I park at one location and I walk across the street, is it my responsibility to then move my car, and who's accounting for that parking? You know, we deal with that same principle all across town, but especially in downtown Mystic, of people parking at one location and then going out to other commercial uses. So the same principle applies here, that parking is really difficult to enforce when you go to one location, you're not being watched as you go to the next location. And so it becomes really difficult to manage and becomes really subjective to identify what a true parking need is at a location and what a true shared parking agreement should or could be.
Does the traffic authority get into this at all, did it play any role in this, the parking aspect?
Not, not on the, not on the parking aspect, only as it applies to going onto the public roadways or the state-aid roadways. So they're going to look at the trip counts, but they're not going to necessarily look beyond the pedestrian crossing, the street action. Where you're, where you're parked and where you're located becomes largely irrelevant at that point to them.
I'll just say for the record, so on our client's property, they haven't leased any of their parking spaces to anyone for a shared agreement, as far, as far as I know. And it's never come up in discussions with our client, they're not letting anyone park on their property to go to another place. As has been mentioned, you know, we, it's, it's, we want to keep all our parking for our uses. And our shared parking analysis is just onsite between the diner and the hotel. And we do feel that when it comes to shared parking, if you're going to a hotel, you're not going to park across the street, sorry, carry your luggage across the street, you know, you're going to want to park at the hotel.
What does a shared parking agreement look like, is it an easement?
I guess between two property owners is typically an easement, in other towns.
It's not recorded, it's not recorded.
Well, in some towns, they require it to be recorded because they don't want anyone to sort of pull a fast one and say, I'm going to, my buddies let me park ten cars here. You know, especially in tight areas, I'm thinking of like Rowan in, in Norwalk, where it's very, very tight. So if you need fifteen parking spaces and you have ten and you need five more, you have to come to their commission with an agreement, ten years, at least ten years parking agreement, for five spaces that are specifically identified as this is for, you know, Rowan and Seaford. Yeah.
We don't, we don't require that in our regulations.
That may be something we want to take a look at.
At the, at the next meeting, you can bring it, at the next zoning meeting, you can bring it up.
Correct.
But I'll also say that in both the, the comments from the Mystic Diner owner, you know, he says, we are in support of the application for the renovations, plant at the hotel located on the property. And with the important caveat that the commission leave in existence the alternate entrance with, from Route twenty-seven, which we already talked about. And, and I did hear from their attorney today, and he understands why we're doing it, and that's what his client would like to see, that his client, you know, the owner, the operator believes that it relieves traffic and, and everything. But I think we've already sort of discussed how it, it's actually probably more of a problem than, than helps anyone, because once you get those three cars. I'll also note that in Bill Milson's, you know, his, he concludes his by saying he's in no way opposed to the undertaking the needed renovations, but that the changes must conform to existing regulations. He also says practical functionality, I'm not quite sure what that means. But I, I think we addressed all his concerns about parking traffic and the site plan, the width of the entrance between the two properties. I think if you have public comment, we can stop here, just ask the opportunity to.
You'll get time for rebuttal.
Thank you.
So no one has any further questions of the applicant or his attorney or the engineer? No, okay, then we'll move to public comment. And we'll first, we'll go through everyone on the list here, there are several people that have identified themselves, and then ask for anyone else who wishes to speak. So I have the first person listed as attorney Jim Loughlin in Fort Old Mystic Village. Good evening, sir.
Hi, how are you, Mr. Chairman?
Fine.
I'm just going to move this, if that's okay. And then before I forget, Chris Regan's going to follow, my comments will be.
Yes, he's the, he's the next one listed.
He's the star, I'm just going to be very brief.
You can't do it to him, it's got to be just one at a time.
Exactly, and Chris took photos this afternoon, which are, is a Tuesday in the middle of it all, as opposed to an early June. And they're in here, and I can share a link with staff, and, and this is the password to my phone, maybe that shouldn't be part of the record.
Can we get that for the record?
Just in case it locks up.
I'm trying to client program.
Yeah, so my brief remarks are bookkeeping, tell you the punchline of what Chris is going to talk about, and then maybe some brief observations of what counsel was saying and their representative from the applicant. Bookkeeping first, I usually save it for the last, but one of the options you have today is to withdraw the application without prejudice. And you can even waive the fee so that tomorrow they could resubmit without any added expense, other than redating the application, and that gets you a full set of.
other than redating the application and that gets you a full set of cars, full timetable within which to act. That would give you more than enough time. The punchline of what Chris is going to talk about is, yes, absolutely, responsible development in this area of Mystic Stonington is critically important and that's, that's what Chris and Mystic Village is all about. But at the same time, it's got to be responsible. And the reports that were filed that I just received recently are based on a June 18 day, which is a Tuesday, before schools were even let out. Those photographs are from today, a Tuesday, in the heat of it all, right? In the best part of the summer. And you'll see that the parking lot is packed. So the, the analysis and the traffic count that was provided in the Tuesday, June 18th data touches only on the traffic. And maybe only four in and outs will happen, but if it's in and F already or whatever the level is, why would you want to even add four when the developer can, the applicant can use what's already there? It's not as if you deny this application that there won't be anything there. They will be able to use the 97 rooms that are already in place. We're not saying that we want that. But before the approval happens, let's answer the question that you posed last time we were here and present a meaningful traffic count as well as a meaningful parking report. That's what those photos will show, that it's been, it's overly burdened already. And for, I remember from last time we were here, the applicant talked about doing valet parking. Well, that's just sort of pushes the problem down river. Maybe it, it gets the parking offsite, but that's the sort of problem that might build into greater traffic issues that we need to avoid in the upper part of Mystic here. Counsel mentioned that it's not a 50% increase, so it's not much to worry about. But if you add 17 rooms to 77, that's 22%, and that's not insignificant. Wow, that was a lot shorter than I thought. So, that's what I was thinking. Thank you very much, Chris Regan.
Thank you. So the pictures, can I ask a question?
Sure.
The pictures that I just saw, they were taken from across the street, so from Old Mystic Village across 27 and then...
Looking west across 27.
The view, right?
Correct. And then Chris included some photos from his own Mystic Village to show that it was...
Okay. And then, but it was just, it just showed the parking spaces that would be closest, the existing parking spaces that are closest to 27, not anything on the sides of the building.
I wasn't there for the, for the photos.
She's right. That picture was shown.
In front of the restaurant primarily.
Yeah. It doesn't show a full parking lot, as you had referenced it. It does show that the spaces of budding 27 along the west side, it does appear that they're filled. But I think those fill up first anyway.
Right, right. Okay. So I just wanted to make sure that you weren't saying that even though that, that hotel is, is not viable now, that all those spaces were now, now being used. And that's not what you meant. You meant the ones right near 27, near the diner, correct?
That makes sense to me. But Chris, can you go further into that?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, you too. Thank you.
So now, next on the list, we have Chris Reagan. Evening, sir.
Evening. Appreciate your time tonight.
Appreciate you showing up. Talk to us.
Well, it's, I'm, I'm pro-development. I'd really like to see this happen, but my concern is parking. When you come in and you have 221 seats, that's 74 parking required, plus employees. That's another 10, 15 employees. So we're talking, that's, that's going to be 90, 90 seats to 95. And then you've got the hotel requirement of 106. So you're over 200. And they're basically saying 152 for shared parking. I, I live and breathe this. I drive around, I see the traffic float. Today, we're about 80, 85 to 90% full at the village. Requirement's 95%. So if you have a rainy day, where do you think the hotel people are going to be? At the hotel and at the restaurant. So when we talk about overflow, when they first opened it up, we did a, I didn't know was, had to be approved by the town, but we had a parking arrangement for them to use our gravel parking lot out front when they first opened up. And after a year, they said, "We don't need it." But I know for a fact that the employees do park at the adjoining property. So that's something that you guys have to investigate on your own part. But for me, I'm always policing our parking lot to making sure that parking spots that we have for our village are for our patrons and our tenants. Because when it gets filled, last year, all summer, every single day, was completely filled. Yeah, I mean, we had 1.9 million people last year with a 16.4% increase year over year. It's a lot of traffic. So we're working with the state and we want to take, they're, they're going to take, as you come off the exit 90, they're going to put Old Mystic Village and Aquarium straight ahead. So now you have the stacking lanes on the access road. So hopefully we'll alleviate some of the congestion at Coogan Boulevard. But I still think it's going to be an issue because you're going down to one lane, down Route 27. Fundamentally, it's never going to fix itself. I don't see it working to the extent that we're always going to have congestion going down 27 because you don't have two lanes. And that's going to be, that's going to be the downfall, not necessarily downfall, but the problem that we all have to figure out, how do we resolve it? You know, everybody talks about doing a parking structure out near exit 90. Okay, what's that going to be? It's going to be a dead space for our area. We don't want downtown problem up in our area. We want to help try to solve the problem, but they need to put parking down. As an example, on the Groton side, they're approving stuff on the Groton side where they have the art association and they sell that parking lot seven, eight times over. They don't have, that, that's the issue for downtown. And so that's really on the Groton side, but not on the Stonington side. So what I don't want to see is, you know, we make a misstep that causes a ripple effect. And that's my concern. So I think, you know, I was not planning until I understand exactly what you guys have to go through. And it's about, I think your comments were spot on. What's the parking account that you have? I'm glad you asked because I didn't have to say it. But, you know, I think it's concerning to the extent, because there's going to be more development that's going to happen. I don't know what Bill Middleton's going to do on his property, but there's going to be parking requirements on that. And then what happens? Are you going to get the shared? I don't know if there's days that we're completely full because of the overflow of the aquarium coming onto our property. So then I have restaurants that basically are starving for parking for their customers. So it's kind of a ripple effect that you have. Success kind of has an effect on parking, you know? Downtown's the example. And we're, we're, I'd like to see the improvements on the property personally, you know? But at what cost? And that's what the developer has to, you know, figure out and satisfy what you guys want. You know? I mean, it's, it's a tough decision that you guys are in to make a decision on that. But I would say, look at the calculations and Tuesday, June 18th, my brother has four, five stores in the village. I said, "I did a parking study on June 18th." It's not even peak time. And so, you know, when you get into peak time, you guys all see it when you drive around, it's busy, you know? You can't hide it. Everybody says, "I can't believe the amount of cars are around." So, I mean, all I could say is, take a look at it. Hopefully they'll come back with some different data to satisfy what the needs are. And if it, if it plays out that it works for shared parking at 152, that's your, yours, your guys' decision. So I just don't want to see it be an issue for us. Okay?
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Does anyone else in the audience wish to speak before we give rebuttal time to the attorney?
I'd say a lot of the, all of the issues that we heard, parking, traffic are things we discussed at Great Lakes already. I mean, Mystic is a popular place. We can't change that. People are going to come here, whether four or five extra cars may come on a particular day, like I said, because of a good restaurant review, because of a popular event at, either at Old Mystic Village or maybe down, downtown. I personally think that's part of, you know, the charm of Mystic. It's part of what keeps this community vibrant and it's part of the hassle of, of living here. But in terms of, and, you know, I guess someone could say it's death by a thousand cuts. Do you have a moratorium? I don't think it's particularly fair that any one property owner should be, you know, the, the straw that breaks the camel's back. Because if nothing happens at this property, as I said, someone could just, the restaurant next door may put the best Italian meal, you know, that people have ever heard of on their menu, and then four more people go there, four more cars. You just don't know what it's going to be. I think if you look at the objective data in terms of what the science tells you about the number of cars that are going to come to this use, I think that's really what you have to rely on. It's, it's not going to change if we do it on a Saturday. What's not going to change is the impact of this use. You as commissioners who live here can rely on your general knowledge of the area when making a decision. We started this application by saying, "We don't think we need a traffic study because we all know that the traffic's terrible." But what we can provide for you is that the maximum amount of additional trips is going to be eight in any, in the peak hour, four in, four out. That hasn't changed. Counting the number of cars on a Tuesday in June doesn't change that. Counting the number of cars on a Saturday in August won't change that. We could have counted the cars over the art show weekend. Yes, it would have shown horrible numbers, but it doesn't change the fact that if you add 17 hotel rooms to this property, that the science tells you the number of cars turning into it is going to be four at the peak hour and the number turning out is going to be four. So you have to decide if you have the information you need to make a decision. I would say, we would say, that you have that information. Adding, you know, showing more numbers that, that traffic has worked in August on a Saturday, I don't really, you know, it'll confirm what we all know, but I don't think it's necessary to make a decision on this application. What I appreciate from everyone who's commented on behalf of my client is that people want to see this site improved. I think it'll be a benefit for the town. I think having 17 more hotel rooms is good for the town. It's, maybe it takes pressure off people wanting to do short-term rentals, but there's a need. And, you know, I didn't really get into it yet, but, you know, this is what the, the plan of conservation development, which is one of the considerations, you know, you're supposed to look to, this is what it talks about, your special permit criteria. You know, a lot of them are pretty generic. Adequately served by sufficient water supply and sanitary facilities, that the public is fully protected from fire, safety, security equipment, you know, that, we're actually making that much better from the current hotel. You know, and the one about traffic, just, right, this is what the regulations say, that this condition is fulfilled. The transportation services are adequate and no undue traffic generation will result that would cause a deleterious effect on the local welfare or safety of the motoring public. I think when it comes to that standard, which is the one that's in your regulation, we meet that standard. Four trips in, four trips out will not cause a deleterious effect on the local welfare. It will not create at any point of determination, any dangerous or objectionable elements to area residents, no adverse effects will result in the character of district, property values, start features. This is the same use, it's just getting better in order to public health, safety, or welfare of the residents. No deleterious impact to irretrievable emotional, ah, emotional Freudian slip. Irretrievable environmental resources will result. We will comply with all applicable regulations, mostly as conditions of approval, and then consistency with the Stonington Plan of Development. And so in those, Section 10.3, for example, states maintaining and supporting the businesses that are already here is an important, is as important as attracting new businesses. That's one of the, the goals. And a stated task is for retaining and supporting existing businesses and to work with them to assure their expansions take place in town. Policy 1041, states that the town should promote economic drivers, including but not limited to tourism. This would add hotel capacity, improve tourism. So, and that's, I went through the entire plan of conservation development. Those are the really the two that apply here on point. Supporting and maintaining existing businesses and promoting economic drivers, including tourism. So when it comes to the criteria that you need to apply, we feel we meet those. And we understand, like I said, we understand we could do more studies, we could do studies till the cows come home. But I think you can use your, your judgment and your general knowledge of the area to find that you have what information you need. Again, given the timing of things, I mean, we would extend the public hearing if, if it's requested. We'll grant you that request, but it doesn't get us to another meeting. So I don't know the benefit. We're willing to just, we can go back to the, the police commission. If, if you want to wait till you hear from them, you don't have to make a decision tonight. I think you have 65 days to make a decision. And, and we can go forward from there. And then you can condition the, if, if you see fit to, to consider this application favorably, I think it can be properly conditioned going forward. By then, we might even have something from DOT. I don't know, but DOT doesn't make final decisions until you have a local approval. So we're kind of stuck on a catch 22 there. So with that, I would, you know, I would suggest that close the public hearing and happy to have you act on it tonight. I, I think it's a great project. I think it's a good project for the town. I don't think anything new is going to come out of the, the police commission, but we understand why you might want to wait for that. But we would ask that you close it, you act on it, and approve it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone who spoke previously wish any rebuttal time now?
Thank you, Mr. Chin.
Okay, thank you. How does the commission feel about this? There's, there's a couple of questions here. And I think a couple of moving parts. Your question was a very good one. You know, just how many spaces do we have and how many spaces are we sharing? It wasn't really clear until you asked the question and it's clear now. The question of whether Tuesday and June 18th is, is a good baseline. There's a lot of questions that, that, you know, I don't think we have the answers to. But how does the commission feel about this?
Gary said one more thing about the, about the Tuesday in June and the, the traffic study. They kept talking about it, it was just the 17 rooms, but I don't know if you accounted for like the increase in seating in the restaurant.
Right.
The seating in the restaurant numbers seem a little bit off from the report and what's given. I'm seeing like three different numbers for how many, and did that include adding these additional seats? So it's not just the, it's, I'm talking. It's not just the, it's not just the four in and outs. It's like, what about, you know, these additional 30 seats? Do you put those into the calculation?
Yes. I just want to be clear for the record, there's no change to the number of seats at the restaurant. We had to clarify the number of outdoor seats and that's why I gave you that exhibit tonight. You talked to the... You talked to the operator, he provided me with that. There's no plan, that's the number of seats that have been at the restaurant, the Mystic Diner, since, I don't know, years. Plus the outdoor seats that he added during COVID, so those have been here for at least four years. So I just want to be clear, there's no change to the proposed number of seats at the Mystic Diner. And then we did include those in the shared parking calculation. It's on the last page of the latest thing we said. Total seats, 255. So that's on, that was taken into account in the shared parking calculation. It's the letter dated July 22nd. So, the only additional uses at the site is 17 hotels.
Well, 17 hotel rooms, but an upgraded hotel. And whether that upgraded hotel would change the whole shared model in terms of the actual counts. Now you're dealing with outdated, I don't want to beat it up, but it's an outdated hotel, and you're going to upgrade it. Would that change the shared model, the actual field counts that you use to validate it?
I don't know. Peking, the I T E and the urban planning data, they take data from across the country and compile it into, you know, arcs with curves that fit and, you know, tell you, okay, this is how many studies we did, and this is, you know, the 95th percentile confidence and that sort of thing. There's no, there's no data in there about, oh, this is a 10-year-old hotel, this is a 1-year-old.
Or a five-star or a three-star, yeah. Well, that's all, that's all fine, but you add it as just another factor that, that, you know, can't be really, I guess, scientifically weighted. But you could physically, you could physically count it at a different time, and, and take out the date issue. And you know, you've got the trips from the diner, which theoretically shouldn't change, but might because you're next to a three-star, or four-star, or maybe even five-star hotel now. So I, I think there's a lot of things changing here. And in addition, you've got the police chief wanting to take a look at this with his group, again. And that puts us all in a very difficult place. You know, because we don't know what's going to come out of that review. You say that you think nothing will come out of it. I, I can't say that with confidence. And I don't feel comfortable, I certainly don't feel comfortable acting tonight. I don't know how anybody else feels about that. And I, and I want to hear that from the other commissioners, because your opinions are very important to me. But the other option on the table, the other option on the table is to withdraw. And
I don't have the authority to withdraw the application.
And if I can respond to you, Chuck, and also maybe, I definitely think I would like to hear from the Police Commission and find out. I think they might actually help answer or clarify some of the questions that were brought up. I don't feel that, I understand what you're saying, that you feel we have all the information we could act, but I don't feel in good conscience we could act without having.
And that's fine. I mean, every applicant wants an answer tonight.
No, I get it. And, and, you know, I think there's a lot to be said that, that's favorable about this project, but I do think we want these other questions clarified before we can make an informed decision. So my recommendation just would be to close the hearing, and then, you know, you would understand if we close the public hearing, then whatever comments come back from the Police Commission, you don't get to come before us and plead the case or.
Neither does anybody else.
Right, exactly.
In deference to the other people.
So.
Understood, yep.
I mean, I know I'm not voting on this, but I would be very hesitant to close the hearing without hearing from the Police Commission. You know, I know it's, it's not technically considered new since it is a staff report, but it means that really no one else can talk about it, the public can't address it. We can't get any other feedback. So, in terms of, like, as I said, I'm not voting, and it's my first night on the commission, and I know I'm being very vocal, but I would be uncomfortable closing the hearing at this point.
But then the other option then is we don't have enough time to extend it, correct, Glifton?
But they can withdraw tomorrow, like, they don't have to withdraw it tonight.
Well, it leaves, it leaves them an opportunity to withdraw. I'm asking him his opinion tonight, just as he's asking me my opinion of what I can do tonight.
I, I think if you don't close the public hearing, you have to, I can give you an extension for 23 days. You have to schedule a specialty hearing. I don't think you could continue a public hearing.
But you could go back to your client, and you could say, we've got, had a discussion. We've got the Police Commission. The, the commission is feeling like the Police Commission may come back with some pretty substantial information. We would not have any, any, any ability to, to speak to that. So let's withdraw, see what happens.
My client's invested a lot of money in this application.
And he's going to make a lot of money if it goes through.
The only thing that I would add to that, Lynn, is that the Police Commission has already approved the project with no comments based off of two meetings that they've had, based off of what's already been presented tonight. The police chief is requesting it go back to the commission based off of public comment email that was sent to him. What would go back before the Police Commission is, again, the exact same thing that you've heard tonight, that they've already heard few times in a row. It's just adding in a layer of public comment that they've already heard at their meetings anyways. It's based off of an email. So I don't, I don't know if public comment that's been provided, that's already been addressed by the commission through its meetings before already, is substantial enough to require or make a change to what they've already seen and approved? So, and why I did add it as a stipulation was because I did determine it minimus to what would be the larger outcome. So, if, if it is a recommended stipulation of approval, which I've just put in the draft as a report, the language states that if there is additional comments that come after that, that need commission review, it'll come back through the same way it does every other time with O S T, or other commissions that review projects.
The other option the commission has is to deny it.
I mean, if we close the public hearing.
Yeah. I, you know, I just, I'm not, I don't typically speak in favor or against applications, and I'm not here. A lot of the comments that have been provided, though, on this issue are completely subjective and not based on data. And so what the regulations do require is that data to back up those decisions, whether or not that 152 spaces in this case is enough. The applicants provided their traffic report, which I'm not qualified enough to read either, that says there's no change, and there's eight peak trips in it, four in, four out. That's the data that the commission has to take to make a decision, not extraneous, subjective information.
But whether the shared parking is enough, we can make that decision.
That's another one.
Whether we feel that, that the 40 spots, 40-something, as shared is enough, and I think that is something that's in our purview to decide. We can say that's not enough parking, to consider as shared.
Correct, it's determining what is the, what is going to be enough.
If you can't just say that's what's enough, it's what's in the regulations.
That does become the commission's responsibility is, okay, if the commission's going to say 152 is not enough, what is enough?
Right. What the regulation stipulates.
Correct.
So, so I mean, that.
We, I mean, it just doesn't meet the regulations.
Because the regulations say we had that number, whatever it was, 250, whatever it was.
We don't have it.
We don't have.
And it's not there, but they're saying that some of that's shared, so we don't need all that, but that is our decision as a commission to say, no, you have to do what, you know, what's in there.
Yeah, sure, the public hearing's still.
Right, it's Jim Lotte, one again, for Old Mystic Village.
We can dispense with the formality, we've done it so well.
One thing you can do is make the decision for the applicant. Deny without prejudice. And you can indicate to your staff that when they resubmit tomorrow at no added expense, they can waive the fee. So there is no more added expense.
We are aware of that option, thank you.
And then number two. Data that you can rely on is, yes, from the traffic report from Tuesday in June, but also testimony that's been presented to you tonight from Chris, as well as photographs, talking about what happened today on a Tuesday, as well as what happened this past weekend when it was cloudy.
We heard that.
Yeah, and so just to, I'm sorry, then I took your time, perhaps.
Oh, that's okay.
Yeah, but that's just as a reminder.
I just want you to know we are aware of this.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you again.
Thank you. So what is the, I guess, I asked the commission, what is your pleasure? We have to close the public hearing, I know, but it's with regard to all of this. Do we close the public hearing? Do we leave the public hearing open?
Well, I think the question would be, if we leave the public hearing open, then would we be willing to schedule a special meeting in order to hear this before the 23 days or at the 23 days?
It's a dangerous precedent.
I'm just, I'm merely presenting the option.
You're going to do it, you're going to do it for everybody. So if the commission is comfortable with that option, we're going to, and then we didn't engineer this schedule, we reacted to what was submitted to us. And it's a special accommodation that, that if we make, I think we've got to do it for everybody.
I just feel like we should close the public hearing and vote. That's what I think we should do. We've asked, we've given the option to rescind. He doesn't have the authority. We close the public hearing and we vote with the information we have available. Like we do with all our other applications, right?
How does everybody else feel?
I can make that motion? I'd feel confident to move forward with that as well. Father does.
I am not going to comment on this since I'm not voting.
Does anyone have any additional comments? Does anyone from the audience wish to speak at all before the commission takes an action? Then what is the commission's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close the public hearing for this application.
Motion to close the public hearing's been made by Ryan, thank you, Ryan. Second?
Second.
Second, and by Lynn, thank you, Lynn. And all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. What is the commission's pleasure on this application? Do you wish to add? Well, my inclination is to make a motion to approve with a number of recommended stipulations, and then let the commission decide based on that. I do think the applicant has responded to our request for additional information in good faith. I think they had responded to the other board's questions. I know the outstanding item we have is with the Chief of Police. I believe we could make a stipulation to accommodate that if there were any substantial items that came out. Number two, oh, it's already in there, even better. So I think we could do that, and then let the commission decide if they feel that there is enough information to do that as well. The only other option, as noted, was that we could deny this without prejudice. Well, if your motion fails, is that a denial? That's what I was going to ask. You have to actually have a motion to deny. Okay.
Or else you just let the clock run out.
And does that actually also stand as a denial without prejudice if the clock runs out? Or is it a denial with prejudice?
I believe so, I have to.
I'd want to confirm that, so to be sure. That, that, you know.
Regardless, now that the public hearing's closed, the next meeting in September is within the time period of the commission making a decision.
Oh, okay.
So if you choose not to make a motion tonight, or a motion is denied and no motion is passed, you can still go through to the next meeting.
To the next scheduled meeting. Just a hypothetical. Can we consider the feedback from the chief if we get it before the next meeting?
You can't consider it because it's, it's not ex parte communication, because it's from town staff or its agents. So that does count. So the commission can use that information to make a decision. Just if the Police Commission comes back and says they request or recommend a change, the applicant cannot make that change.
Even if we stipulate it?
Correct.
Okay. That makes sense.
Would that address parking or not with the police chief? Any chance, I think?
Please, the public hearing is closed.
The commission can, can make a stipulation of approval to address the comments the same way you do the town engineer, myself, and other E O S.
Right, right.
So, the commission can take the feedback from the Police Commission, and if that is recommending a change, same way as anywhere else, the commission can make that a stipulation of approval then, and then it just has to circle back and be done on the back end.
But the applicant can't address.
But the applicant can't address it at the meeting.
No, I realize, the applicant's done. The hearing's closed. That's not the question I'm asking. The question I'm asking, if, if the Police Commission says, you know, they need X number of spaces more, I don't know how to get them. But, or, or that, that they want traffic counts on a different date, you know, could that be put into a stipulation?
It, it could be. If it's substantial enough, I wouldn't, I would make a staff note to not recommend doing something like that if it does substantially change the project.
Okay. So possibly.
And I also have to confer with the town attorney.
Okay.
So maybe what we want to do then is.
Wait till the next.
Wait till the next meeting, so we at least get some, you know, a little bit of feedback to know what's the better course of action here.
Which is when?
September 17.
So would we have to make a motion, or do we just leave the public hearing as it is closed?
It's closed, and the voting is deferred.
Voting can be.
But there's no motion, right?
No motion.
It's just on a future agenda.
Correct.
Voting and discussion.
Yeah.
Just internal.
And that's just between the commission, myself.
Yeah, it would be just like we make a motion, there's a second, and there's discussion. And in a case like this, the discussion will be substantial.
I think that's a correct course of action.
Okay. So no further action required, just close the public hearing.
And we've already done that.
You already did that.
We've done that, I know, we've done that, but no action to table or anything. Okay, so before, I believe that's the last item on the agenda, the next item is withdrawn, correct?
Next, the next item is withdrawn. And then, well, we've adopted a standard procedure, so go through the new submittals. I haven't, out of the ones that we've already scheduled the public hearings for, the other applications staff hasn't recommended leading a public hearing for them. The commission can always choose on that second application to have a public hearing, but I haven't recommended it, I would be wary.
Anything else to come before the commission? This evening?
Not this evening, no.
Okay. Before we break up, I would like to formally welcome our new member. She brings along a tremendous amount of expertise and experience in civil engineering, environmental engineering. I think I understand it well enough that, that's an accurate statement, correct?
And. And 12 years on this commission.
Yes, that's right, longer than any of us has spent on it.
12 previous years sitting in these halls.
And I thank you for stepping forward.
It's going to be fun.
Welcome, welcome.
I don't know if I'm like that, that's not exactly what I'm expecting. It's nice to see you curling.
And.
I, can I just add a couple of things?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I'm, like I said, this is no, usually, this is things, is there any place for commission comments, just to talk, for us to talk? Is there ever that on the agenda?
Yes, it's.
Did I miss it?
It's under Item 6B.
Okay, commission, okay, so I missed that, okay. Because that was under report, so it's not just general commission comments. Okay.
We've treated it the same way, it's general commission comments.
Okay, because I had some questions about the P O C D, the R F P that went out. Are we going to see that? How do we vote on that? How do we choose who, did I miss that? I'm sorry, if I missed it, I can talk to you later, I can call you tomorrow.
Yeah, give me a call tomorrow.
I know, I've emailed you to ask you some questions about how that whole process is going.
With you, that's separate, that's being done at the staff, that's being done at the staff level.
And why is that?
Because that's how R F Ps work in town.
The charter stipulates that, that it's a staff function, it's handled by the Director of Finance. the director of finance.
Well, suddenly get out, I understand, but who, how do you decide the firm, I'm sorry.
The only reason that, that I didn't respond directly is because Q B S selection is always subject to protest, as you know. And, you know, I'm sure Jim Sullivan can answer any questions that you have on it, and it would be protected within the selection, and, and I just, I just don't want to jeopardize the selection with a public discussion of it, I don't think that's appropriate, because, because it isn't, I don't think, you know.
So we don't see the firms that, that applied or whatever sent there?
No, I think, I think you probably can see that, but I think it's a, it's a discussion between you and the administrator, the finance chief, that's handling it.
Okay, I'll talk to you, I'll give you a qualit...
And I, and I do think our staff member, who is very qualified to do this, participated in the generation of the scope, and from what I've seen of previous selections, very similar to, you know, federal and state selection criteria, we had a, we had a selection recently that was more of a highway infrastructure-related matter, and it was done using DOT criteria. And I feel, I feel it's well done, you know, the ones I've seen in the past, but by all means, feel free to call, Jim.
Yeah, I will, and I'll call you about it, because I have a lot, I'm concerned about that, and I'd like to discuss that more in detail.
Can I just ask one question?
Please, go.
So we had a packed agenda for September and into October, so now that we are, have delayed the discussion and vote on this, do we, are we going to be changing that agenda around? How's that going to look?
I'll sit down with Adriana tomorrow and see what that's going to look like. At the moment, we only have two public hearings scheduled, we potentially have a lot of non-public hearings to discuss, we might be, we might be able to put those around, since none of the notices are published yet, per se.
We were done with, with, I mean, even a relatively extensive agenda of non-public hearing items tonight, and we were, we were done with those items by 7:30.
Yeah.
So I think that if we only have two public hearing items, you know, we can probably squeeze it in, but I agree with you, you know, the prospect of, you know, thinking clearly through something at 11:30 at night is, is not the way we lay these things out.
Because I think some of them are text amendments, aren't they?
Correct, there are two text amendment applications that are up for public hearing, and then obviously cans and site plans, and we've already moved those around between September and October, so there might not be a great impact by moving this application over, we'll see.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clifton, thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Okay, and second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, meeting is closed.
Thank you.
Thank you.